If we're talking affordability however, and we want to be honest about affordability, there is a near-to-apples-for-apples relationship which we can discuss. And that is that rates as proportion of house values. That then gives you an idea of what people can actually afford. So that poorer cities like Dunedin, where house values are much lower, simply can't afford a whole lot of rates that individuals like people living in Taurong can afford because they're a wealthier city. So in terms of affordability, I believe, and we've had this argument in previous councils going back many years, but I believe that the nearest we're going to get to apples-for-apples comparative for affordability is rates as proportion of house values. And if you do that, Dunedin isn't a quarter of the way from the bottom, it's at the top. And that is what we must look at in terms of speaking about affordability. In terms of absolute rates, the amount of rates you would pay here or the amount of rates you'd pay in Taurong, sure, you can say that our rates are actually really not that bad, we're a quarter from the bottom, whatever. But if you're going to talk about affordability, you really need to look at rates as proportion of house values. And that is the figure I think that we should actually have presented to us. Because that gives us a much more realistic...
You started by saying that CEO budgets made a claim about affordability. I think what I said was, you'll have to make decisions for yourself about what that means for affordability. So we sit a quarter of the way from the bottom, that's an absolute rate value. But we also have, as I said, people who are on much lower incomes, students with no income. So you'll have to make a bit of a... You get to weigh up what that means in terms of affordability. There is a change in this annual plan, and there is a measure that we're now doing across, just across Otago, because we've been working on trying to have some consistency in the kind of measures that we use. And the agreement to trial, Queenstown Lakes have been running it for a while, is to include a measure around rates as a proportion of income rather than flat rates. So rather than using house prices as a proxy for wealth, using income as a proxy for wealth. I haven't seen a list for the country that sees rates as a proportion of house value that would put us at the top. I'd be surprised if we were at the top, but we certainly wouldn't be a quarter of the way from the bottom.
It was a few years ago that we had that.
I would imagine we would be...
No, but we'll get there, Andrew. Thank you for reminding me.
But rates as a proportion of income is something that we are planning to investigate. So we are doing some work on some Otago-wide measures that enable us to have some benchmarking with each other. Things like proportion of our rates that are spent on overhead, and how do we compare with each other? Because we must be able to help us tease out who has better practices than we do in terms of things we could change and also reduce the rate burden, so that that works under weight, if it's any help.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate that you are going to look at real affordability figures because we are...
Can I just point out, councillor Van de Wiss, I would suggest that rates as a proportion of house value can be quite misleading. And the reason for this is that if you take Auckland, the fact that they have the least affordable houses to buy makes their rates look the most affordable. Now, that would clearly be ridiculous. The fact is that services cost the same pretty much to provide regardless of the house value. So the cost of providing water in a community roughly with the same population, etc., was going to be roughly the same. But you don't say that a pound of butter is less affordable for somebody because their house is worth less. If it costs the same amount to produce a pound of butter, or the transport system or whatever. So I think that the chief's suggestion that income, which is certainly the measure, one of the measures that's used by central government to look at affordability for the special housing schemes, is a more reliable measure than house value.
I'd be entirely happy with income as well. The thing is that a few years back, those figures weren't available, whereas house values were an easily available figure. Certainly, if we can have affordability looked at in the terms of income, as suggested, I'm extremely happy with that. Thank you.
I think the debate across the region was two possibilities, and I think we agreed, and Jane might be able to correct me to put both of them, and one is rates as a proportion of married couple superannuation, and... Oh, so for a couple that are living. So that's one. And one is rates as a proportion of income, average household income. In each of those two measures, we come out better in some than others, and worse in some than others, and not best or worst in any.
Right. Are there any questions? Because this seems to me an opportune time to break for lunch break. Since if we finish questions, we can go on to whatever motions, anyone, or resolutions, anyone, or recommendations that we have. Councillor Wilson.
Can we see the resolution now that has been suggested so that we can contemplate it over lunch?
Well, we can. Now, my question of councillor Thompson, that is, is your proposed resolution inconsistent with the recommendation that I have here? Because we could have both. And that is that the draft financial strategy is shown amended, be approved at public consultation, subject to minor editorial corrections that may emerge. Maybe we brought that after your one, or I'm not...
I don't know. That it is inconsistent, and in fact, I'm not entirely sure whether my motion belongs in four or five, to be honest, but I think because it potentially impacts how we might evaluate five, that it's better than it...
Right. Okay. It's going to be...
We can hand it out, Ross?
Yeah.
Thank you. We might just have seen that first paragraph, that councillor note.
The first is a commentary, as I remember councillor Thompson, isn't it?
Yes, it is, really, just to put some context. Should I speak to it at this point, or what?
Can you speak to it just briefly at this point to let people chew it over a little over? But I'm cautioned that we're going to go into a much more deep after lunch, so we're going to have to do it again.
Well, okay, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'll speak to it as if there wasn't a lunch break, so...
Make it short.
No. It's quiet. When I was reading through the, both the financial, draft financial strategy and the budgets, a number of things struck me. Firstly, that we had a draft financial strategy that was saying that we would only exceed 3% per annum rates increases in extraordinary circumstances, or was that effect? And yet we were presenting a budget which in fact failed to get under 3% in all bar two years, I think, and they were out so far that probably it was fairly meaningless anyway. Secondly, I was concerned about the fact that we would, we had effectively had a view around where our debt level should get to a year ago, which was $200 million by 2021, and that we had not had any debate around how the extra $30 million of stadium funding might impact that decision. And essentially, the budgets that we've been provided, pretty much, two-thirds of it, you could argue, is actually being... We've increased the debt repayment schedule without any debate as to whether or not we wish to do that. And I wasn't sure that that was wise or appropriate. I felt we needed to have such a debate. I was also concerned that we were looking to get some consistency, I felt, around rates increases, and that that consistency over the 10 years is not necessarily being assisted by a debt repayment strategy, which is essentially, and I'm simplifying, but is essentially, we borrow money over 20 years and we repay it in 20 equal instalments over 20 years. And I was questioning whether that was the most appropriate way to do things if you want to get some smoothing of debt repayment. So the first part up there was really just a preamble, but the points below it, I was really saying to staff, look, can you have a look at some alternative models that in fact are not actually too difficult to look at? Because you don't have to rearrange, you don't have to rethink all of the departmental spending. It's more around how you manage the debt and the impact on interest of any changes to that debt repayment schedule. Could you look at adjusting the levels of debt repayment within that 10-year period? So as to smooth rate rises. Secondly, adjusting the cash on hand build-up. You'll see in the balance sheet that in the second half of the LTP, we start to grow cash in the bank from around the $1.5 million mark in the first half through to, I think, about somewhere just an excess of $5 million. And I was questioning, asking staff to have a look at whether that cash build-up could be used differently to manage rate increases. Thirdly, I was concerned that we were forecasting an LTP in which, over a 14-year period, there was really no return to a direct-to-council dividend from the council companies. And I totally accept that there is a dividend being paid, it's just it's going through The... Either the, there ought to be a return to some kind of additional dividend funding into the council in the second half of the LTP, or if the answer from the companies is, no, that's not going to be possible in the 10-year timeframe, then I do think that we have to be asking ourselves the question as to whether we're invested, whether our investments are in the right place. Because whilst you can argue, and quite legitimately, that you are getting a gain in value in those companies through the improvement in their balance sheets, I think that if we as a council were looking to have an investment strategy, it would be predicated around dividend return, because we actually require cash each year, not around capital value growth. Because we're not a trader, we're not buying or selling shares to, if you like, to release that value. And so I was concerned that there was no forecast for any increased dividends in the second half. And also, I was concerned that whilst, this is supposed to be a long-term plan, we're supposed to forecast stuff in it, we've spent an inordinate amount of time and pissed a whole lot of people off by bringing in a development contributions policy, all apparently to return no revenue. Now, whilst I accept that it's very difficult to predict that revenue and it will fluctuate, I think there does need to be in a long-term plan some assumption with regard to, even if it's an average assumption. And I recognise that over time, those things will change, but that's why we review it in three years' time. And even in between those periods, we make decisions to postpone spending, to add stuff in, to take stuff out. A long-term plan is a guide, it's not, you know, the tablet's come down from the mountains. So that's really the background. I think that there are some ways that we could get our, particularly in the first half of that LTP, our rates increases, inflated rates increases much more around the 3%. It would require potentially rescheduling some debt, and you would, at the end of that 10-year period, have repaid about $30 million less debt than you are, than we are currently forecasting to repay. And it may be that that's what council wants to do, but we haven't had that debate, and I think we need to.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest that we have the motion put and seconded after lunch. Right, we will continue, councillors. Can I, we've now had the opportunity to digest the motion. Can I invite councillor Thompson to continue speaking?
Look, in essence, there is no headroom at the moment. And the prince, not the only reason, but one of the reasons for that is that essentially in the budget, we are looking to deal to that additional $30 million worth of debt, not entirely, but very substantially over the period of the LTP. That's not a debate that we've had as a council, and I think that we need to have that debate. If the view around the council table is, that's in fact what we want to do, then there is no headroom. And you, you know, we could also have ourselves a lot of trouble by just finishing up this afternoon, because there's no point discussing any of the other things, frankly. If you want to create some headroom, there are potentially some ways that could be done, that could be done, that would have us in the same position as we had planned to be a year ago, before $30 million of additional funding came in place. So I entirely accept that there are valid arguments either way. The reason that I'm raising the question is, in essence, we've had five years where it's been very, very difficult indeed to invest in anything else. And the current set of budgets, we are essentially forecasting a further 10 of that. And I'm not sure that you can go for 15 or 20 years without investing, continuing to invest in the city. And I was comfortable with the notion that we should be looking to get our debt down to $200 million by 2021. I'm not comfortable with the notion that we should be trying to be so heroic that we can do nothing for the next 15 years. And if we can achieve where we wanted to be a year ago, by 2021, and essentially at the end of the LTP period be, in fact, no worse off than we had planned to be before the additional $30 million, then I think that that's a debate worth having. It may not be a debate that necessarily is agreed with by others, but I think we need to have it at least.
Okay. So this has been moved, councillor Thompson, secondary councillor Staines. And now, I'm happy to... First in the line, councillor Van de Wiss. But I also acknowledge that there may be questions of Mr Mackenzie throughout this, so I'll allow people to ask questions to the councillor Van de Wiss.
Councillor Thompson, I think, has raised some very good issues. I'd like to deal with the one he raised earlier first, and that is the one about the appropriate target for debt. I'm concerned that generally speaking, this whole teno of debate is not sufficiently aspirational. The talk of 10, 15 years of basically status quo is horrific, I believe. And I believe that there is at least one or two nettles that we need to grab. I've mentioned staff costs already. But I would want to focus just now on councillor Thompson's appropriate target for debt. I suggested that an average of the last 100 years of Dunedin City's operation, he had an average of the debt that we've had in the last 100 years. But that would be an appropriate target for debt. It may be an aspirational one. But it would account for the chief financial officer's concern about the cyclic investment saving. We've had a big investment period, we should then have a saving period afterwards, and that this has gone on for some time. Over 100 years, that kind of cyclic problem essentially disappears. I'm very grateful for councillor Noon bringing up the drinking water standards and how much more expensive they are now. And I would like to, and the suggestion that, you know, we need to have more debt now because our water quality's better. I would like to suggest that councillor Noon read R.A. Lawson's, the book on R.A. Lawson, where the quality of drinking water 100 years ago was discussed, the quality of roads was discussed, the quality of sewage treatment was discussed, and the massive increases in the standards of all of those things that happened over 100 years without any debt increase. In the good old days, generally, people paid for the things that they bought. So the idea that we somehow have to have all this debt because we've got these improved standards and because we've got these improved facilities, if you look at the 100 years and what our forefathers were able to do in terms of improving facilities, in terms of building the town hall, in terms of building our infrastructure, and doing it without debt, that then, if we were to average the debt over the last 100 years, would give us an appropriate target for debt, as suggested by councillor Thompson. I grant it would be aspirational, but I think we need to be aspirational. And I think we need to also look at the only two suggestions that I believe have been outlined in terms of actually how we achieve things in terms of dealing with the debt. The suggestion by our chief financial officer, Mr Mackenzie, that we could slow down repayments as a way of giving us some headroom, is one that I would like to argue forcefully against. Slowing down repayments basically then loads up intergenerational equity, which is just a nice word for fed from future generations. Don't want to go down the slow repayment. What I would like to look at is creative options for very rapid repayment of the debt. And in that case, we need to look at divesting ourselves of assets and all liabilities. And I think we should be very tough about how we look at assets and try and see whether or not they really are liabilities or not. And I'm not talking about, as councillor Thompson has suggested, selling our footpaths or our drains. I'm talking about selling Delta, I'm talking about selling Aurora while it still is worth something. Central government has recognised that selling off the electricity companies has been in the national interest, and I think we should seriously look at the same. We need also to recognise that the, how to get there in terms of all these aspirations is something that we're going to have to spend a lot more time looking at. So in short, I think we should be trying to restructure companies like Delta and Aurora. Aurora makes money currently, but I don't think it will in 10 years. Delta, I don't believe, is an asset, but it's something which is still saleable potentially, could be made more saleable. And if we could sell these things, and the Waiori fund that's been suggested as well, we could then get ourselves in a position where we just weren't living under this enormous debt cloud. A debt cloud that our forefathers never had, and yet were able to raise the standards, not just drinking water, but all sorts of other standards as well in the past. We need to look to the past, learn from how that was done, and have those aspirations again ourselves.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm not sure whether you're saying that there was any room for questions somewhere above...
What I'm saying is that I'm quite happy for someone to ask a question separate from speaking, because it may be that a question may be put to Mr Mackenzie as to his view on this, or to clarify the implications of this.
Well, it's sort of a question, I think, which is with the proposed item three, and it may be a question for the mover, that I don't think projection about an increase in DCHL dividends solves any debt problem. But I think maybe inquiring as to DCHL whether realistically they could produce us something that gives an expectation of a different return might be. Just writing something on a piece of paper saying that we increased the amount we're hoping to achieve, we've done that before, we've actually demanded before that they give us more money, and that doesn't actually get us more money. So I'm just wondering whether there's a right thing, and somewhere between Richard and Grant answering the question, is there a right way of wording that actually leads to, is it realistic for us to have an expectation that's higher? Will they produce to us something that says that we like? Because if they're not making a projection on a piece of paper, it's good.
So in answer to that question, the budget has been prepared on the basis that for the first two years, the dividend's flat, after that, we increase it by inflation on the annual basis, and you'll see it actually slowly increases over the 10-year period. My view is that that is a conservative approach. When you consider the fact that we are reinvesting significantly into particularly Aurora, you would be expecting them in the longer term to increase their dividend flow back to council. So I do not think it's unrealistic. I've spoken to the chairman of Dunedin City Holdings, and, you know, I guess it's not going to come back to where it was, because you've got to look at the reason why the $4.5 million drop occurred. But you could expect that it should be higher than what's probably budgeted for in here.
So I could say approach DCHL and ask whether realistically...
The problem we've got at the moment is that we're going through the statement of intent process, which is where the companies start to indicate the third year out that we don't have any forecast for. So in three or four months' time, I have a far better idea whether that's realistic. But that's only a three-year plan as well, so it's not 10. So whether we like or not, we are going to have to make some assumptions about where we think that dividend's going to be, and what that dividend should be, and what level it should be.
So those assumptions based on information from DCHL, where I'm sort of going, rather than us making a projection?
Yes. My concern is that I don't want it to go back to the bad old days where this table was expecting a high dividend, and I know Richard's not, because it has to be sustainable for all entities. And that's when we put in the fiscal strategy, that it is sustainable and maintainable for all involved.
Could we mean that?
Can I just, can I just point out that the way I read this is that, that ask staff to model alternative budgets that give us a framework within which to make some other decisions, but they're contingent on that framework, and that framework's going to be developed after we've had this meeting. And I remind everyone that we're coming back to the confirmation meeting in May. So what I see this as doing is creating, or asking staff to create a model framework within which we can then proceed and make some potential decisions. So I don't think it's either reasonable or necessary at this point to have absolute certainty, because we're asking them to create some models to work with. But I defer to the mover.
The answer is, you're quite right, that this is in effect, essentially what we're doing is in this budget, we are forecasting with as much exactitude as we can apply our costs, but we are not forecasting with as much exactitude as we could apply our revenue, or potential revenue. And I think that when you, so what I'm simply asking is, if staff in consultation with DCHL come back and say, there's not a hope in Hades that there'll be anything extricated out of Dunedin, then there's another conversation that has to be had. But at the moment, it's just not there, not because there's no expectation at all, but because we just don't quite know what to put in and when to start it. And so that's, I'm really saying, well, if we're going to be asked to make decisions about spending, we're being potentially asked to make it in the absence of complete information. And I don't feel comfortable about that. So that's really why it's...
So just, could we have any consultation with DCHL a moment of that?
Mr Mackenzie is the chief financial officer of DCHL. So that's the point of the group financial...
But look, I'm happy to have that in there. Short second.
You've done that question in the meantime?
Yes, if we can put that in, it's lovely.
Councillor Bazey.
Well, I think you almost said yourself, you wish, the motion is that staff model several alternative budgets, and that's what we should be discussing, not fee budgets or anything else, just coming back with some alternatives. And I'd be very interested to hear what Mr Mackenzie says about this. I mean, I think, my personal view is that because of councils concentrating on our debt level, it sometimes impacts on the mentality of staff with regard to... debt level, it sometimes impacts on the mentality of staff with regards to their initiative with coming back with alternatives, and I think this would give staff some alternative with regards to our budget. And I'd be very interested to hear how staff react to these, to this motion. So I think we just should be putting, to me, it's, it's, it makes a lot of sense.
Councillor Perry.
Thank you, your worship. Just in terms of the headroom that councillor Thompson's talking about creating, I wondered if this piece of work ahead of us in terms of alternative budgets would include an assessment of how we might be able to gain some revenue from selling non-strategic assets. Now, I'm thinking, not necessarily CCOs, but obviously most of them are of strategic significance, but in terms of the city properties. And you might not be able to answer that now, but if in the, you know, that might be the headroom that we're looking for.
Councillor Tatch.
I just had a comment, and it was in relation to councillor Wilson's question about CPI. I would support changing it to the local government cost index, I think, because it is, well, theoretically it is more appropriate. So I wonder whether perhaps we could either exclude that from the recommendations that you put until we haven't figured, or defer motion on the recommendations until we have a figure.
This is, sorry, what?
This is in relation to the rating method, in relation to the stadium. Sorry. Yeah, both in relation to the stadium and the community services targeted rate. On page 71 and 72 of the 2015-16 rating method, both of which refer to CPI, and councillor Wilson's just made the point that we don't endorse the use of CPI for our own calculations, and yet we are including it as a variant in our...
So are you suggesting we choose another index, or that we delay doing this until such time as we do here?
What I'm suggesting is we may wish to consider deferring decision on this until we have the local government cost index, which is what we use for our own calculations. I understand inflation calculations.
Could I suggest 3%, which is the same as we've already chosen for other things, and so if they have any basis of...
What's right?
Choosing 3%, which is what we've chosen for the other fees increases.
Your worship, I have the answer for it. I've just found it inside the bill report, so it's on page 5.34 of your papers. It's 1.13 for the year ended June 2014.
I would have, I would feel happy reflecting the local government cost index then.
And we can specify that in there?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So will that change?
Free as well.
Makes it clear. And the same with the stadium? There you are. Any further questions? All right. As you can see, the recommendations, someone, councillor Hawke, sorry.
Thank you. I just wondered if you had an idea of what the impact would be on residential rates, were we not to adopt recommendations 1A and 1B, that non-residential and farmland rates decrease?
I can certainly model it for you and give you a scenario of not incorporating that, but you can, I guess, see the impact of it on page 71, where I've got the properties So on the first sample property there, the average residential property, the general rates on row eight are going up 6.2%. So the driver for that is we've got a, we've actually got that rate going up in our budgets by 5.7%, and so the difference, bringing them up to 6.2%, is mostly that change in what we're doing to the differentials. So that's the residential property. So you'll see that the non-residential general rate line is going up 4.1%, so they're less than the budget increase. Same with farmland, that's less than the budget increase, and lifestyles higher on row 36, 3.62. So they're higher because of that change in the differentials. I just pointed out to councillor, that's the last step in that differential change.
Councillor Wilson.
A matter of detail that's a bit too, yes, but the private street lighting, we do that under contract, and we don't give people much say, I think, in that process. And if we're rolling out new LED lighting, I think it would be a good time to be saying how that is going to happen to people, whether it's going to be capital cost upfront and then followed by a lower cost or not, because there are different ways of doing that if we're charging for it. And I'm not sure that we've got, turned our mind to how we're going to be doing that, but this would be the only chance that they may have a chance to consider submitting on how that has changed for them. Does that make sense? We, Delta runs the contract on Abaha to go and change private street lighting, and if there's going to be a capital cost for LEDs, change over, then I think that the people should have a chance of how to pay for that.
Well, the first question is, are we changing the private street lighting at the same time as we're changing the, Michael? You're worship.
Good afternoon. Early stages on it, but the intention would be that we would change all the lights to LED. Hadn't gone a long way down the track. The indication was that the easiest way for the private street lighting was that we would do that, and we would not increase or not change the private street lighting rate, which would recover the cost of those streetlights over, just, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, just over a few years. So that doesn't actually put a burden on the rate payers, but it actually enables our network to actually get the efficiencies of the energy.
Would that mean, Lord, that they may get a benefit of a reduction as well?
It sounds, am I correct in assuming that what you're saying is that people who currently pay for private street lighting would pay the same amount, but that have different fittings?
That is correct, yes.
But there has to be saving long-term, isn't there?
Yes, but I think what Mike was saying is that by not charging them the capital cost, but keep maintaining the operational cost at what would become a higher level than is required, it smoothes it out, and it doesn't cost them any more, but we pay, the general rate pack doesn't pay for the fittings either.
I do appreciate that, but at some stage I'd like to see it be tipping down, and I just want to make sure that we're not taking all the benefits in the long term. That's, over 10 years, I imagine there's going to be saving for those people, and we can't keep on putting up their rate by 3% each year on it if the costs aren't.
Your worship, that is, that's correct. We hadn't gone through the modelling yet because we were waiting for the decision that we were going to go down, confirmation that we were going with the LED lights, so we would need to communicate that with the private individuals.
Thank you.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Carolyn, on the last second last page, 5.8, it talks about the rating method and the forecast rate increase at 3.7.
7.8?
7.8. Oh, sorry, 7.8, be pardon. So the 3.7 is a combination of the general rate increase and the targeted rate increase smoothed out. So I just wondered whether we should have, under summary, the rate forecast increase 3.7%, and in brackets, that's actually 5.7 for general rate, because there's a whole lot of people out there that don't pay targeted rates. So there's a whole lot of people that will get 5.7 rate increase, because they only pay general rates. And then if you've just got your targeted rates at X percent for water, X percent for wastewater, solid waste, et cetera, it just helps to clarify for people reading the document.
Yep, happy to point that out when we go out to consultation, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? The recommendations are on page 71, someone would like to move them, move councillor Staines, seconded, councillor Cover, and that is amended to reflect the local government index rate of DCHL on the last, so it's been moved and seconded, so we're in discussion. Now, I've put all those in favour, please say hi. Karen. Thank you. Given that we're scheduled to have a break at 3, I think we'll do it at 1:02, so we'll be back here at quarter past. Right. I think it's Jean and Laura.
Jean, me, and Laura.
Couldn't remember what it was told, I was wrong, no, it was told wrong anyways. Right, we're on section 8, councillors, 8.1 to 8.60. Right, we're just talking strategy. Do you like to pick it off, or do you just want to go straight into questions?
Quite happy just to go straight into questions.
So councillors' questions, right from the outset.
Mr Chairman.
Councillor Batson.
Thank you. I'd like to refer to 87 and the excellent montage that's there, which I think is particularly useful, because it helps people realise the magnitude of what the city owns. However, I don't think value in front of the dollar figures is the correct word, and I don't want to dwell on it or make any other suggestions, but I'd just like people to consider what might be appropriate. I understand councillor Wilson has some possible suggestions. I mean, it might be cost, it might be repl, but it's just, I don't want to revisit the debate about whether they're assets or liabilities, but I just think value is the wrong word in terms of the dollar that's attached.
We'll address that.
Councillor Wilson.
That's just a question related to Jane, and she's sort of covered it, I hadn't emailed it in, and it's that the infrastructure that's covered here is that that is required under new legislation, not that which generally comes under infrastructure services. So there is a, some things, for example, natural, that aren't, isn't covered in this, but that's not because we chose not to. And I just think it needs some tweaking and some context around that, because I'd hate to think that people thought that meant that we didn't care about it.
Do you mean that we should explain why we are using just...
The very narrow regulatory requirements we're speaking of.
That is what has been decided for this time, and I think the intention is in the next cycle that we extend the range.
But we can see that on page 8.5, I think we can make that quite clear, that by law, this only refers to the following items of infrastructure.
The other questions that, I was, the figures that are given on 8.0, extreme rainfall plus 9%, plus 2%, and I just didn't quite understand whether those figures have got round the other way, round the wrong way. That we're only expecting to have an increase of, it was a cumulative, it should be 11%. It doesn't seem to be makes much sense. Yeah, you'd expect if it's plus 9%.
We need to check whether that's been transposed or...
And it's not, it's not need something else after it, for best.
Any councillor?
A couple of things. One of them is similar to the common matter about periphery. I appreciate the size of the documents that came to us, but there are quite a lot of proof and mistakes to it. They need attention, but two questions, though. The first one is on 810, I can't see any reference to any narrative about better store water management. It's talked about in other documents and the fact that managing our store water is going to be, in terms of the consents as well, is going to be an ongoing issue for us, and so seems to me it will be appropriate and desirable to have some narrative about that. Future, present, future challenge in that narrative section as well, if you can think about that, please. And on page 815 and following, there are a number of places where you talk about transport, where it's really roding. I just think there's a, I mean, transport and transportation and roding are all different, and I don't know about the technical terms that you use and what they're supposed to mean, but it seems to me, as a layperson reading this, that there are areas where you're not talking about transport at all, you're talking about roads.
I will have a look at that, too. There is an issue where we, there's a mandatory legislative required name for that group, which is roding and footpaths, which is quite ongoing.
That's fine if you call it roding and footpaths, but it's transport that's been used in a wide area.
Okay, Roger.
Councillor Batson.
Just carrying on the issue of transportation, the, on page 8.10, the third bullet point, fourth bullet point, sorry, talks about being the gateway to the Lower South Island, a major transport and export hub. Can we possibly have, since it's been talked about off and on for years, the possible airport extension and rail yard extensions for port chambers? In terms of being a transportation hub, I think that it would be really nice, it's an aspirational thing, but to consider that we do have already the land at the airport, for instance, for an airport extension, there is potential near port chambers for extended rail transportation connections, and if that, either of that, or both of those things preferably, could sort of be mentioned in passing as things that we're sort of keeping an eye on in terms of really making the need and the gateway to the Lower South Island.
Yes, it's a good point. While those assets are specifically covered by the strategy, it's worth noting those ligatures.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawke.
Thank you. I have a question on page 89 around population trends. It notes the 65-plus age group in the likely mode shift towards public transport, mobility scooters, shared transport, et cetera. I wonder if it might be worth adding alongside their reputation and record in crash statistics, the trends we're seeing in our younger age group around not driving, the trends nationally and internationally around people not getting their driver's licence until later if they drive at all, and what that would necessitate around other modes, be they pedestrian cycling or other transport or otherwise?
Side of the side of the...
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Batson.
On page 820, in the economic predictions, principal responses in the centre there, the last bullet point reads, council will provide diverse economic opportunities for business and residents. I just think that's a little overblown. Something like encourage and avoid which provides might be, but I hate to think what a statement like that could get us into having to pay for it.
Any others?
And that is, I note that it's effectively in two sections. There is a section at the front end, gloss it, on the transport stuff, and then there's the back end, which is on the water stuff, I think I've got there the right way around. Both of them refer to challenges, and there are a number of overlaps in those challenges. Some of them are consistent in the wording between the two areas, and some of them aren't. One of them is in relation to oil prices and price volatility, and I think the way that it's framed in terms of giving balance to it, it's better under transport than it is under water. And I wonder whether perhaps pre-fulfilling those assumptions and just making sure that they are consistent would be worthwhile.
We have had some feedback from all of New Zealand on the strategy, and that was one of things that picked up that we were a bit inconsistent in the way we applied the information about some of those challenges, so we're going to go back and review and try and deal with some of the documentation as well.
Yeah, great. I had a couple of questions in relation to some of the water and waste stuff at the back, and I guess I could ask these in relation to the water and waste budget stuff when they come up, or I could ask them here, don't know what's better.
We'll give a crack now.
All right, well, just in relation to the watercourse ownership stuff, which is on the last page, it's flagged as a considerable issue, and whilst it says presently the subject is for consideration only, I'm considering it and I'm concerned about it, and I'm wondering what exactly staff's advice is that we do if we are considering and we are concerned.
Former working party, gather data, do an evaluation, look, actually Tom can tell you what's underway.
Yeah, so we are going to prepare a separate report on the watercourse ownership stuff, you're absolutely right, it is a big issue currently, we have thousands of watercourse owners throughout the city, and as you can see, the value is huge, two hundred and twenty odd million dollars worth of watercourses if we were to manage them as one set of assets, so there will be a separate report coming up on that.
And that, the timing of that would be this summer, this financial year or before next?
Yep. Yeah, later on this financial year.
Cool, thank you. And similarly, in relation to the Mozgill water supply issues, it says that action won't be required until outside of the ten-year long-term plan horizon, but I guess one of the questions that came up to me reading this particular issue on this page eight fifty-four, is that if there is a contamination plume flowing towards the current bore sites, one option is to wait until the contamination plume hits the bore sites and move the bore sites or move the water source, the other is to deal with the contamination plume, which may be a cheaper option and may need to be done earlier than ten years, Laura's shaking her head, so.
Yeah, in terms of feasibility of that, the contamination plume is something that primarily the Ataga Regional Council is responsible for managing and dealing with, it's not something that we necessarily provide funding or resources to manage, in terms of the RNC Council's response, it would be easily far more cost effective to manage a source or source allocation instead of trying to manage a pollution plume in groundwater.
Is it something that we need to be engaging with you at Ataga Regional Council?
It's something we regularly engage with the Ataga Regional Council, we help with monitoring and determining speed and flow of the plume and extent, but at the moment there's still a lot to be defined.
Do we know where it's coming from?
Yeah, there's a number of thoughts as to where it might be coming from, some of the old airfields and the old landfill sites that are out that direction, I guess the other thing to add, in terms of the practicalities we're treating from those boards, whilst we wouldn't want to do it, we particularly had to, it is relatively straightforward to actually connect the whole of Mozgill on to the Mount Grand Southern system, so it's only a relative, it sounds far worse than it is in terms of what it would mean, it does of course mean addressing the question around fluoridation of Mozgill, although that's the other sort of fishhook in that particular issue, but practically it's not that big an issue for us to address.
Any other question? Councillor Wilson. In the North East Valley race water on page eight fifty-six, the legislature control was put under place in the front of Forest Park, is there any contamination coming through that water pipe, because it surfaces quite very chronic rains of the overload in the stormwater?
Yeah, there is a certain level of contamination that's drawn via a, an effluent disposal pipe that comes out of this forest park landfill, but largely that's contained in terms of contamination.
So it goes into the stormwater system?
Into the wastewater system.
Into the wastewater, yeah.
Correct.
Is it being tested for contamination?
Yes, yes, it's regularly tested under our resource consent conditions for managing that landfill.
Because when they were doing the crack pipe up there a while ago, testing for the crack pipe, they got to test the water, and there was no contamination coming out halfway up the landfill into the stormwater system.
Yeah, no, those are the results that we'd expect, at the moment that that infrastructure seems to be working well.
No further questions? All right. The resolution that's recommended that when I move from chair to the draft infrastructure strategy chair, Shang Mee, the proof of public consultation substituting minor editorial revisions at Mount Merge, senior councillor sustains, is there any discussion on that?
It's including the amendments discussed, it's including the amendments discussed.
Yes.
Have you had to stand your worship?
I'm finding it a little difficult if you continue on that, something like that.
Stand your worship.
All those in favour, please, aye? Against Kerry. Right. Section nine, thank you. Economic development city promotion. Right, do you want to, well, was twisted, would you like to address questions on any remarks, or would you want to go in straight?
Oh, just a couple of quick remarks, firstly, this obviously is a relatively new introduction in terms of the budgets relating to the marketing activities now under Enterprise Dunedin, we think we've got some pretty modest increases across there, so a lot of these budgets were done pre my arrival into council, and that's obviously going to be something we'll be considering over the next one actual year, certainly happy to take questions.
Can I just remind councillors one thing, that this budget was done before John's arrival, and so this budget is not the final shape that the economic development budget will be in, basically he's inherited the tourism Dunedin budget, Louise's budget, the economic development budget, and his job over this period of time is to work out how he wants that structure to change, but obviously he's been here, he'd been here for about three weeks when that had, this had to be handed in, and it's not done yet, it will get done, but this budget is effectively a status quo budget, so if you want to tell him that you think he should be weighting different things differently, please do, but please don't criticise him for not having done it yet because he hasn't.
So I'll take that, questions, councillor Kerry.
I wonder whether, and I don't know whether the discussion should be delayed, but bearing in mind that we're not looking at the paper we've got on GIGA issues, they seem to be relevant to the rest of it because that's the total to do with economic development things, and I'd sort of rather look at the whole thing together if that's possible.
The Giga Town one.
Yes, so all of the reports will be discussed towards the end of this process, so this is the kind of status quo, no new levels of service, but we haven't done away with any existing ones either, budgets, and then all of the things are there at the end for the new stuff for you to weigh up between them.
The only other question I have is nine dash twenty, I'd like to know a wee bit more about Dunedin Centre, doesn't really have any information for us, and not for now, but if it could come back to us. Sorry, we've got a total cost of eight seventy-eight and operational cost of three forty-two, it sort of isn't, doesn't give me any information really.
Actually, this probably needs to, this needs to be moved anyway, I think, because this is no longer part of Mr Christie's responsibility, this is, so we need to ever think about where we sit this, this used to sit in this economic development generalised area, but we just need to think about whether we should be putting this somewhere cleverer, given that all of that is now overseen by the DVML budget to manage the Dunedin Centre, which is town from Glen Moi in this building, so, so that's a discussion I think to have with DVML in any detail in terms of what they're spending that on or the revenue.
So in terms of what we move and pass, Jean, are you suggesting that we note that this will come out of...
Note that prior to us coming back with a final, we'll see if we can find somewhere cleverer for this budget.
Councillor Bezette.
Well, given what the CEO has just said, is there any relevance in discussing this further, and if it's going to be changed, I mean, what is the timeframe, are we going to have something positive to be able to put in our, in our draft annual plan, and I accept the problems that Mr Christie has, but are we going to be able to come back with something tangible and meaningful, or do you mean something?
I mean, at the moment, this budget still gives you a sense of the quantum that you'll spend on the ice site and separate quantum for tourism and economic development, and there is the budget line specifically around the Grod Dunedin partnership, who's, that's, should be the repository for your money to deliver on the economic development strategy, so those things in that sense won't change, however, it is likely that John will want to have a look at how his budgets relate to delivering on each of those strands of the strategy, and which ones are his priority, and he just has not, I mean, as I say, he's only been here since, since the beginning of November, so he just hasn't done that yet, and not surprisingly.
I guess also what I'm saying is, you know, what does John want out of this meeting today that's going to help him, you know, put something together that is going to be meaningful?
I'd be very comfortable with the budgets as we've proposed here, given that if we are going to change our level of activities, they will come back to council, and we would be not seeking additional funding to what's been granted in these budgets.
Councillor McTage.
I just have a question on nine three, and that's in relation to the regional partner network contract from Callahan Innovation, maybe I'm just showing my ignorance, but I'm not aware of this or the function of it or what it's for, it's obviously something new.
It's new in terms of being an accounting line in here, the Dunedin City Council through the Economic Development Unit has a joint contract held with the Ataga Chamber of Commerce, and that contract is for the delivery of the regional partner network programme across Ataga, that contract also includes Callahan Innovation, and we're currently going through a review of that contract, it'll be, likely to be out for ten days before June, end of June, and our funding for that carries through till the end of December, it also includes the capability assessment programme that is done for business and can, through that programme, grant or allocate funding towards training and upskilling of small businesses.
Okay, so part of this is grant funding for small businesses?
Yes, it is, oh, sorry, it's not funding for the small businesses, it's funding for the staff that are required to undertake capability assessments and the groundwork around Callahan Innovation grants, it's a staffing resource.
Thank you.
Councillor Benson.
On page nine one, could I just ask you please to have a look at the five priorities, they just need, the last one doesn't sit with the format of the first one, and some attention needs to go into some elegant wordsmithing of that, please. See what I meant?
The title visitor night one?
What? A lot, you go from a city, a city, a city, a lot, it doesn't work.
Okay, yep, we can look at that.
So you can fix it? Please.
Councillor Van Oost.
I've been delighted that we were able to get the Giga Town jump on the rest of the country, and I understand that what it actually gives us, apart from some of the little frills, is a two-year window of opportunity in which we get high-speed service ahead of other places, what I would like to know is, is the Economic Development Unit organising packages for business relocation with discussions with Corus, with discussions of local building owners for cheap floor space, and also perhaps getting a list or a directory of highly skilled people that would make a package that you could bring together to tend businesses not just from other parts of New Zealand, but from other parts of the world, if we have the high-speed opportunity, and if we can facilitate a package with Corus, landowners and staff companies, surely we would be in a quite strong position to actually do some of the things which have been talked about for a long time in economic development.
Yes, so just a couple of comments on that, firstly, there'll be the paper that I think we discussed on Friday around the Giga Town funding proposal, which is in a sense looking at additional funding that would go to resourcing the Giga Town office and a work stream that they would be looking to put in place under a service level agreement with the Enterprise Dunedin, that's what's proposed, running concurrent to that, the review that I will undertake with Enterprise Dunedin, will look at how we can apply the resources of that unit to maximise on the Giga Town win, so I think you would see that a lot of the work that we'll be focusing on over the next two to three years will certainly gigify any of those opportunities that we can pursue around winning Giga Town.
Given that we only have really a two-year window of opportunity, how quickly are we able to present packages to potential businesses?
I think we'd need some discussion with private stakeholders in regard to that, but I think we can move quite quickly, I'd like to think that before the start of this financial year, we'd have some tangible actions around that.
Have you had discussions with Corus yet?
This Giga Town office has been having lengthy conversations with Corus, and I think it'd be a pretty fair expectation from them that we'll move quite quickly as well.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, on page nine one, the indicators in percentage growth in Dunedin's average hourly earnings, and the second one, the national average in labour productivity, is that median or mean that we're using there?
I think our median figures, they'll come out of Phil, or Stacks New Zealand Stacks, but we can check that.
So not, so not an average?
No, they'll be the median earnings.
Okay. I wonder whether it might be useful, while it is handy to know where we are relative to the rest of the country, it doesn't, these indicators don't tell us where we are going, you know, if there's a huge boom in luxury retirement villages in total, that's beyond our control, but we could be going forward as a local economy, but that would set us back relative potentially to the rest of the country, so is it possible to get both of those in this?
Here we can certainly look at some other indicators, I think mostly we're looking towards trying to align our goals here with the Grod Dunedin partnership goals under the Economic Development Strategy, which is measuring increase in job numbers over ten years, ten thousand new jobs, and the GDP figures, so those for us are the two very meaningful figures that we're trying to align all of our economic activities towards.
But neither of those things would be picked up by this because there would be, unless it was ten thousand more jobs than somewhere else, or more than other places, but it's not.
More than us, no.
All right, but this, these indicators only measure how we're performing relative to other cities, not how we are performing in our area. not how we are performing in our own city.
I thought the 10,000 more jobs was 10,000 more for Dunedin, God.
Yes, it is.
I'm hearing the Taron rule.
Yeah, and that'll be benchmarked against national statistics.
If those are the two aspirational goals of that strategy, why are they not the indicators of performance for the economic development in city Druasha?
They certainly should be built in there, we can include those in.
Oh, okay, cool. And just another one with regards to the Economic Development Unit, and I understand that some of the departments now within Enterprise Dunedin are new to, once again, new to council, but the Economic Development Unit is something that has been here the whole time. It seems like a fairly scant performance measure for that service. And I'm just wondering where we're at perhaps with developing... If this also came out of the Wykoff stuff, which I'm assuming these all must do, if there's any work going on to develop these performance measures a little more.
I am certainly of the view that we'd need some very strong KPIs.
Me too.
Yeah, John, just in the area of employment opportunities, that priority, and understanding you're still growing into your job, I'm just wondering if you could just refer to page 9.4, and under expenditure by outputs, five lines down is business development and incubation, and that allocation falls away to zero. Just wondering if that's absorbed somewhere else, or I'm not quite sure why that's... It seems an important area and why it's gone to zero for the next 10 years.
Yeah, look, I'm pretty certain that one's being packed up under the Grow Dunedin partnership planning, so it's probably a reallocation away from an economic development budget into the Grow Dunedin partners' accountabilities.
Contestable fund or?
Yeah, that's contestable. Yep, yep. It's also receiving contributions from our university and politik and I think potentially Callahan Fund as well.
councillor Hawke?
In your discussions with Corus about the role on out of the fibre optics, have you ever discussed about the fibre optics going on Aurora's network?
I haven't personally, but I understand those conversations have taken place.
Yep, those conversations are underway at the moment.
Yeah, because I reckon if it goes on, if they can get onto Aurora's infrastructure, they can roll them out very much faster.
Yep, there's a whole series of conversations around trying to harmonise those two plans for the rollout of the wifi, of that UFB, and the renewals programme for Aurora and trying to ensure that they overlap.
Further question? Right, there's a raft of recommendations here, and Jane, you might need to help me with these. I know that the first one, that the intended business service relating to, and then insert relevant activities group, do I take it from that? So we won't do these? That's fine. Good, thank you. All right, section 10, city investment. Right, and these go from 10.1 to 10.21, and they cover properties according to the count of the stadium. So we'll start with... We'll start with... So questions on program, councillor Beck?
On 10.3, it says that over the next 10 years, the portfolio will transition towards the target of having a return that's greater than the DCC cost of capital. Currently, we've got 6% average return. Cost of capital, I believe, is about 7.4. Why are we going to take 10 years to do it? What business in the world would take 10 years to sort out what is an obvious loss of 1.4% on quite large numbers every year? Why wouldn't you not do it over six months or two years?
In principle, you can't turn property around. We've got existing agreements in place with investment properties, and while we're sorting out aspects of the portfolio, so the investment property, the three particular investment properties have got leases in place that don't make it easy to instantly up your returns.
But you can still sell properties with leases in place. Why wouldn't you move more quickly than the 10-year transition that's suggested here?
If we can do that, we will, but that's the programme that's been put in front of us at this stage. And if we can, exactly, we're working on it now myself and Grant to see what in fact we can do to improve the returns in a much, much shorter timeframe.
And if you can't improve the returns, can we simply dispose of these properties? Or dispose of a number of them much quicker than over 10 years? I'd like to see properties that we can't improve returns on, I'd like to see them disposed of at a far quicker time period than the 10 years suggested here.
Yep, there are some constraints, as I understand it, which still has some review issues around it in respect of the endowment status of the land and what we can sell and can't sell, and then what has to happen to the funds subsequent to the sale as reinvestment and further investment property. And we can do that by then trying to find a better returning property if possible.
With respect, I've been hearing that exact statement for all the 10 years I've been associated with council now. And I don't doubt that there are some issues with selling an endowment property, but surely we must be able to move much more quickly on it than we have.
If we can, we will, certainly. That doesn't beat my objective and as part of the management plan that's been put in front of us. I've seen the management as well to move quickly.
Thank you.
Maybe part of that issue could be not with... By instead of having a target of 0.2 increase on previous year, have a target of at least, you know, so that the maximum time we expect to get this increase, and also that if our cost of borrowing changes in a less unsatisfactory fashion, then that doesn't solve it. So instead of that being 0.2, if it wants to be expressed as a tenth of the distance between now and the cost of borrowing over 10 years in the worst-case scenario.
All I can say is what he was saying.
That it could be put in that sort of way.
And improve returns. However, that figure that we're achieving now irrespective of the cost of borrowing, I would say is satisfactory is actually knocked that out of kilter with a normal corporate real estate portfolio. That looks better than the one I'm talking about.
And I'm wondering whether we could have the current cost of borrowing in here somewhere, and that it changes from time to time, but what it is now? And we could have somewhere something that suggests that we can up... We will update the current cost of borrowing over that period? And as a last thing, well, two other things that we may need as a note, we may need to ask people whether we're selling something that they consider strategic if we're following this plan, make them come into the new policy we've got on getting with people, whatever that new policy is. Significance and engagement.
So this here, though, is about the investment portfolio only? It is not about operational or non-strategic property that council's owning, which is, I think, probably more relevant for that policy?
But we do need to flag that one of the ways of achieving being closer to our borrowing is going to be to divest ourselves with things that are complete dog in a financial sense. So that requires engagement with the people before, you know, we can't...
So effectively, what we're trying to do is divest ourselves of unperforming assets. I'm not sure if we... My understanding is policy, we don't need to engage with the public. If we're selling a building in Auckland or Wellington, because it has no impact on the rate per, apart from the return that we can get or do not get from it.
So that wouldn't include, say, Wall Street?
That decision, given the size of it, would come back to council anyway, and then council would have to make a decision whether it needed to engage or not.
Yes, but we're sort of engaged... If this is part of our long-term plan, do we need to flag up that we need to re-engage the community?
You're going to have engagement on a annual basis anyway as part of the annual planning process. But as you say, the significance engagement policy is, in my view, from my understanding, policy is slightly different than for investment property, because it's there to provide a return.
And is this a place to either put a note on here or get a report on, I don't know which, from somebody legal to say how much of this investment portfolio could we deal with? Or what can we do in the way of an endowment? We've asked before whether we're obliged to keep some bits and things, but we haven't actually said if we wanted to divest ourselves of this portfolio in what circumstances could we, or what would we need to do? I think we need at least a legal opinion about that because it's absolutely pivotal for the other choices we could make. And I don't think we've asked the question, like, we want to do something, can you think of a way to achieve it potentially? Is that something that we could get a report on or something? Is that a...
So my understanding is that the information I have seen anyway is quite clear in the fact that of the approximately 90 million we've got in investment property, half of it is endowment property, and we have to continue to have that as an endowment property. So effectively, you're talking about you've always got effectively 45 million that you can completely divest of, you've got to reinvest at least half of it. Now, whether that reinvestment means you buy the Civic Centre or some other building, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Or a Moskile pub. It would be great to have a legal opinion, especially one that the public could know why we're making a choice rather than just swirly ideas that we probably can't sell things.
I think, to be fair to say, that some of the frustration around this over the last few years has been that we have had conflicting legal opinions on it. And I find it intensely frustrating that we can't seem to get to a definitive position, and I think that all the guys are in the same position. So I sympathise with your point. I'm just not sure that we have been able to get to a opinion that we know will stick.
Could Sue look at how that...
Yes, we would follow that up. It would be good to at least put a paper in front of you that says, this is as best as we can get to a definitive position, get your agreement and proceed forward on that basis. And then if somebody seeks to challenge it, we'll deal with that at that time. But at least lay a line in the sand would be a good position to be in. So yes, if we could finish that work off, that'd be great.
councillor Thompson?
Just a question with regard to the reduction in dividend back to the general rule. It says a reduction of $500,000. Yeah, I take it from the accounts that that is only applicable to the 15, 16 and 16, 17 year. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. Forecasters revenues from the current property portfolio. The only way they can change is by either improving the revenues from property over that time.
So in terms of part of what drives that reduction in dividend over that two years is a fairly hefty loan repayment schedule. But then if you look at the out years after that, it's comparatively small. Has there... Have we looked at the scheduling of that and how that relates back to council's particular needs at the moment? And whether or not that scheduling, do, you know, do we need? I mean, is that... Are they the right two years to make a substantially substantial line repayment when we're scheduling very small ones, aren't we?
Through your worship, we could actually look at options for that when we report back on the second. A lot of the debt, I think there's about 15 million in the property investment portfolio, and a lot of it is interest only. So we can look at these ones and see if we could incorporate that option into the modelling that we come back with.
Thank you.
councillor.
Thank you. 10.1 is a repetition of that same paragraph that I raised in the previous section. Can you line them up and fix it and line them up, please? 10.1, the priorities, the one that doesn't sort of match with the other?
On 10.49, attachment four, talking about the artificial turf, I'm very disappointed to see a repetition of some amazing arguments against an artificial turf. As I see paragraphs two, three, four and five, they all basically say on page 10.49 that if we were to put an artificial turf in, there would be higher costs because the stadium would then be used. They try to proclaim in paragraph three that there is a current heavy usage of the stadium by rugby. But...
Sorry?
Point of order.
Point of order?
It's just that this report, the appendix of which councillor is citing, was considered by council on the 24th of November, and there are minutes on page 10.17 which cover what we decided in relation to it. So I'm not sure that it's a matter in front of the authority to discuss today.
There's a reason for it. It wasn't completely obvious to me that it's something we've already confirmed, so there's not much point in going over it again.
Well, the fact that we confirmed it in the past and the fact that I thought it was loony then and that it reappears now in the long-term plan, does that mean that as an elected representative, I'm not allowed to complain about it?
You can complain about it, and it's been overdone, and it's been confirmed, and there's no point in addressing the same issues again because council has taken a position on this and confirmed it.
But in the past, council's taken positions on many things that we've subsequently changed. Are you saying that we're not able to even talk about this particular item now? Despite the fact that it takes up a whole page in this...
Well, the point is more the time it takes up, actually, because it's futile. But it's already been discussed, confirmed, and the point is it's not something you introduce to the here as a basis for something new. It's the basis of what we're discussing. something new, it's the basis of what we're discussing.
I don't mean to, councillor Van Vos, but like.
You have.
Well, the reason I raised it is because I happen to agree with some of your sentiments. And councillor Pete and I moved in second and I think you supported a motion that asked DBML to keep a watching, a close watching brief on the use of artificial turfs worldwide and report that to council as soon as it was believed that installation would constantly increase usage and would not impact negatively on stadiums' commercial revenue streams. And so I just, I hear your sentiments, but I feel like we've we've got a course of action which is being proceeded in relation to those concerns. So I'm sorry.
Isn't trying, that's the point.
How can I object to this particular page, which I consider to be a complete nonsense and also an absolute impediment to the use of the stadium, which could be used on a regular basis but can't be?
The point is that work that came out of this is happening. It's addressing the issues that you were raising.
I've been hearing it for three years, we've got a $200 million investment that's not being used.
This is, so you disagree, but that's fine, you're entitled to. But the point is the review of it, reviewing it is happening. So there's no point in saying it's all wrong or they want to do something else now. I mean, the point's been made and it's happening to some extent in support of what you're claiming. So let's move on to.
So I can simply vote against the whole thing?
Yes, you can. Absolutely.
It shouldn't be.
No, it's not.
It should be out.
Right. Are there any other questions? Right, well, let's, I take it, Jane, that I insert property into that first recommendation? That one? Property investment?
City investment, sorry. City investment.
But we haven't done Waipori Fund, so it's just city investment? We haven't done Waipori Fund investment?
Wait, sorry, I mean, it's property investment.
So property investment. Yes, so I'm moving from the chair, as I can come back. The intended levels of service relating to property investment, including performance targets and measures by which actual levels of service may be assessed as shown or amended, be approved for inclusion in supporting documentation subject to any minor editorial corrections that may emerge. Second, council stands. So that's the correct one, Jane? Discussion on that. Put it all those in favour, please, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Recorded, please.
So we move on now to the Waipori Fund from page 10.9 to 10.13. Any questions?
So I guess the main driver in the increase in dividend from Waipori has been the growing size of the fund and allowing for that. We need to note that this is the dividend back to council. The actual result will be different from this depending on how the markets move over the 10-year period. And I can guarantee that it will not be consistent like we've got it in there.
Could we have either attached to this or just generally an idea of which asset classes, which things the Waipori Fund is? In case at some point we would like to have any input into? The basis of this question is, I was talking to Grant the other day and that some of the money, for example, is in property trusts and some of it's in equities. So how much we're exposed totally to property, for example, that's partly in the Waipori Fund? It would be good to have just sort of classes a wee bit there if we could.
So what normally would happen is your statement of investment policies and objectives has that detail in it and that's planned to come back to council in later in February. Point of view, thank you.
Thank you.
So what do you think about this?
Just do what the way to do the issue.
My apologies, councillors, I was not looking at the page of the property recommendation. But what we'll do is we'll work through the Waipori Fund and then investment account and then statements, ask questions on them all and then there's an overarching recommendation which I was unaware of. So. So we're still in the Waipori Fund. Are there any further questions? Councillor Wilson.
As far as performance measures, I'm just wondering, because of the extreme variation in this, whether we're better not to look at a one-year average, but a rolling five-year, which gives a, takes some of these highs and lows out? And whether there's an opportunity in here as well for taking up the issue that I think councillor McTavish raised earlier about getting it back up to within the 10-year period, the actual value of which we had undermined in previous terms?
So I would suggest that if you're going to do a five-year, you'd do the one-year and the five-year?
Yep, yep.
Because you want to concentrate on the future. But I'm happy with that. And yes, I've noted the point earlier about inflation adjusting and how quickly we can rebuild that up.
Because I think it would be really important that we do aim to have that rebuilt up for the intent that they, to honor the intent of that fund in the first place. If we're going to edit on, that's great.
Councillor Thompson.
The niggly thing for me about this is that we, at the moment, the real value is below the target. And, you know, who knows what that, at the end of the financial year position will be? It looks like it will have improved, but who knows, it could change tomorrow. But essentially, as this is driven, to the extent that it remains below at the end of June this year, it will stay that way for 10 years. In the sense that there's no, we're planning to use the entire projected, so it'll only be, it'll only be by dint of us exceeding this improved performance over the 10 years that we will see any further move back towards equity.
Roughly, the fund is looking at returning a cash return of about 5% but a total return of around seven, seven and a half. So if everything else had been equal, it should slowly build back that return to build the base up.
So, well, it's just that you're showing a projected interest in dividends of 3.8 and fund management fees. So you're left with 3.66. Transferred to the general rate is 3.66.
Yes.
So my definition, I can't catch up.
If you look at, as you said earlier, the actual turn is likely to be different. This is the cash return to council that we're expecting to get as opposed to the mark-to-market or counting return that you're likely to get.
Okay, so this is, so this is, there's no revaluation showing of this?
This is effectively cash back.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions on the Waipori? Right, shall we move on then to the investment account, page 10.13? No questions on that? So move on then to.
That, we'd have to ask, is that internal or?
Thank you. Well, so this is the investment account on to this, an extract from council, 24th of November, on 10.97.
Just supporting information, your worship.
Right, just supporting information, right? And then the report to council on 10.21. Supporting information as well. Right, okay. Any questions on the, so this is the recommendation and the resolution that I was meant to move before for the entire city investment thing for the group. The intended levels of service relating to city investment, including performance targets and measures by which actual levels of service may be assessed as shown slash amended, be approved for inclusion in supporting documentation subject to any minor editorial corrections that may emerge. Second, council stands. I should cancel the call. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. There've been no discussion. I'll put it all those in favour. Sorry, councillor Van.
I was going to say that I don't want to bore people by repeating myself. I have in the past said that I don't believe that the extra 1.8 million for the stadium is appropriate. I don't believe that taking on 30 million of their debt is appropriate. I don't believe the stadium review committee was appropriate given that all those people that were involved in it essentially had an interest in continuing the status quo there. And that'd be the reason that I have to vote again against this. It's just more of the unaffordable say.
Point of order. I'm sorry, I find some of that comment disingenuous in actually taking people, and I'll get the wording out, to say that everyone involved, and he himself, I understand from reading the report, was involved in the consultation and the review. It's unfair to say that they were all involved and interested in it, in the same old, same old. It's not fair to make that comment. And it was, I mean, I think most of us were very happy to have the review done in the nature that it was done. I just think that that's a slur. It shouldn't be left hanging, sorry. The point of order is that it's not correct, it's untrue.
Well, it's my opinion and I've said it before and I'll say it again if required.
People are entitled to say things that are opinion, that may be complete nonsense. And that may be the case, so I won't allow the point of order. It doesn't mean it's not nonsense. I'm going to put it all, I'll put it, all those in favour, please, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Carry on. And recommendation two is that the operational and capital estimate relating to city investment as shown slash amended, be approved for the inclusion in supporting documentation. Second, council stands. I'll put it all those in favour, please, say aye.
Against?
Carry on. Right. Section 11, riding footpaths, 11.1. Welcome back to you. So we'll just move through these. A bit of that. This is what we want to say. I think he's coming as well. Sure. Well, shall we just move through page, page number one, riding footpaths? Take the question, do you want it or mine?
In terms of this budget, I think, just like elaborate, and I think it's probably quite clear to those who have read the information closely, is that in terms of levels of service, we're talking about a sort of status quo approach in terms of level of service. And that you'll see that through some good asset management practices and application of some changes in lives, you'll see a substantial reduction in the renewals program. So, and that's contributed to some of the savings that in terms of rates revenue that has been proposed here. And we think that over the longer term, this is a good program, which is very sustainable. But as was probably highlighted in the infrastructure strategy, if you take a longer view outside the 10-year cycle, that over time, and you can see that in some of the forecasts there, that the renewals program does increase reflecting some of those challenges, in particular the age of our infrastructure as we move forward.
Any questions? Councillor Thompson.
I suspect this policy predates my being on council, but is it intentional or is it designed that we run our parking buildings at a loss each year?
That's not something that I can answer because we're specifically talking about.
Are you in a, you're in a riding footpath?
Why are we done?
We're riding in footpath.
Well, I'm just the result of. My apologies. It's hard to think about.
So we're on page 11.1. Councillor Keller.
I'm correct that we're only doing to 11 teens, so I'm.
Yeah, then book one and then book two at the moment. And then we'll move on to, just work through.
Councillor Van.
Just a general question, given the dramatic reduction in the fuel costs and asphalt costs, can we expect to see some really good news coming out of the budgets going forward? And these won't have been budgeted for much lower fuel costs.
It's a very current question. And we do have in all our current contracts, a bitumen index that's applicable so that the prices are retrospectively adjusted for how that's, how that impacts on the tender prices. Last year, there was, for an asphalt contract, I believe the credit that we received was $12,000 out of the contract. For this year, we will be doing that. And that calculation is done at the end of the contract, representing the difference between the tender rates and the actual time of when the contract is undertaken. So the forward budgets are based on the prediction, but each of our contracts does reflect what happens in the year that it happens. The bitumen index is for the year of actual work.
Right, but there'll be bitumen and fuel components to what are very large budgets. What I'm asking is, can we expect some significant surpluses to be available given that things are budgeted on the old oil price and we've got a much less newer one now?
The result of that, the result of fuel and bitumen is likely to give us a saving in subsequent years. But that's, we'll see as it comes.
And what would normally happen with, say, there was a very significant saving? What would normally happen with that saving?
Yes, we deliver our targeted works because our works within the asset management plan are based on delivering the outcome. And if we do that for lesser cost, the impact is returned back to the common business partners, by NTTA and DCC.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that, Michael? It's a good question. I didn't know about the bitumen index. Have we had occasions in the past where we've actually had to pay more retrospectively? On time frame, you know, when it was going out of?
The bitumen index is relatively new component to those payments. So there will have been years when we've paid more, yes. At this stage, it's stayed within the contingency amount for the contract. Each of the contracts has a contingency amount. And so that fluctuation has been dealt within those amounts. So it's staying within the overall project.
Councillor. Councillor McTash.
Just following on from that question, I take it the petrol tax component that we have to it in come stream comes directly from. comes directly from sales of petrol? And is that, my question is, is that affected by changes to price at the pump?
That's not a question that I'm in a position to give any answer to, I don't know. I'm not sure if anybody here can actually answer that.
That's fine, I mean, I just thought it might be, it might be some balancing on the other side of the equation in terms of the impact, but...
I'm not aware of any major variances from what's been budgeted in the past, but given the relatively unique situation at the moment, there may be conceivable that if there is substantial revenue drops at the central government end, that there may be considerations on that. But generally, we don't see any change.
Councillor Worship.
And I have to apologize, because it wasn't a trick question when I asked about the private street lighting rate before, because it's just been pointed out to me on the line two on 11.4, and I hadn't realised that actually there's a substantial 40% increase there, almost 50% increase in the rate income that we're getting from private street lighting. And I presume that's not, I'm just wondering how that, how that...
I can answer that, that increases reflecting what we're actually collecting, as opposed to reflecting, you know, that size increase in the actual rate. Does that make sense? So, the rate, can you recall Mike, what happened to the rate?
Yeah, the rate has actually gone up just marginally by what was predicted with the energy increases. And what we're showing here is that from 14, 15 to 15, 16, what our budget for 14, 15, we've recovered. Our revenue stream is greater than what was budgeted at the time, so it's not reflecting an increase in the rate, it's just truly reflecting how much we receive.
Under budgeting.
And under budgeting and income. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Can you just tell me briefly what's involved in the community road safety programme, and what implications cutting that budget will have for community road safety?
That's a very good question. It's actually not being cut, it reflects that we're talking over a three-year period, and that the 14, 15 budget was a top-up of monies that hadn't been used in the previous two years. So, over the three-year period, we're marking time, we're not decreasing over the three years, but for 15, 16, it is less than what we spent in 14, 15, because 14, 15 was a bigger programme.
So, more money was spent in this planetary year, but service levels stay the same?
We completed works that we would have otherwise done in the previous two years. So, just look at a three-year window rather than a minute window, please.
Councillor Pete.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just turning to 11.6 and the line, Fort Valo and Harrington Road, Point Road Improvements. Am I right in thinking that line that has a steady two and a half million per year might change, subject to our decision on acceleration possibility?
Possibility. I'm sure once we have that discussion with that report, there could be change from there. So, at the moment, that's the non-accelerated programme.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson. Councillor Thompson. No further questions on... Is it page 11.6 then? 11.6, so we're on to public transport governance, which is pages in folder 18, 12...
Are we, we did 11 to 10 then? We haven't, what about the rest of them? What about 11 to 11 onwards? I'm having a go at the reports, but I'm just wondering...
So, any questions on any of those other pages?
Rest of the 11. Rest of the 11, please.
Could be different staff. Different staff, because it's parking, okay.
Yeah.
So, we've got transport reports now, all right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we've done...
Apart from the late little reports that you've done here.
So, can guide me here, but the recommendations on my page five, if you're...
You've done it, you've done the recommendation, and just write in to the reports.
Right, thank you. So, the first report is public transport governance. Which is on, which is in your folder, 18...
12.1.
12.1.
What happened to the rest of 11? We haven't been coming back to them, have we?
So, what you've got in section 11, you've got, you've got roading and footpaths, which is Jean and his team, and they're here. So, we'll do their budgets and their reports. Then we'll move on to city park, which is whoever it is and their team, and we'll do their budget and their reports. And then we've got whatever the other thing is, and their team, and we'll do their budget and their reports. And then at the end, they may all do a wash-up recommendation for the set.
So, what page are we on to now?
For the reports now, we're in the reports, which is section 18.
18, 12, 1. So, it's public transport governance.
What are we at the end of today?
Right.
So, just a brief introduction, Jane, with a little bit of recent history, just to recap. So, this has been, you've probably appreciated an ongoing discussion, but more recently, in July of last year, there was a decision to decline the offer from the ORC for an interim period, and that, not primarily decline, but just reassess the supposed situation, but also at that time, there was a request that we come back with some guidance and look to transfer it essentially as soon as possible. So, what we've set out here is, we've looked at the timing of the regional passenger transport plan implementation that the ORC is currently going through, and looked at the timing of that bidding in, and given some advice as to what those key milestones are for the rollout, and suggested an approach with the timing of an investigation within a year. And we seek your direction on, and your views as to when it would be desirable to reassess the situation.
So, just to clarify, this, the same two issues are in front of us, as were in front of us about a year ago. And the first is whether we take over governance of public transportation. And second is if we decide that. So, they're the two, and they're separate.
Yes, to a certain extent, they are separate. The first one is whether we do want to. But likewise, the timing of it is important as well, because they're in a, to a certain extent, a state of change, or going through a state of change at the moment as well with the new RPTP that they're implementing.
No, I appreciate that, but the point I'm picking up on is that the resolution that came out of the last meeting where we considered this, which I believe was the last annual plan consideration.
As common to law.
Yes, was that we delayed taking over governance, but that we make a decision in principle, or seek enough information from staff, that's presumably this, to be able to make a decision in principle about whether this council should take over governance or not. So, that's what I mean by that decision, and the timing presumably is to follow that. So, I'm just clarifying what the issues are that are in front of us. Six cents, and you've dashed it. Okay, councillors, councillor McTash.
Thank you, your worship. My question relates to the initial set of six motions, I guess, that we originally passed on this topic. And one of them, number three, was about a working party to oversee the process, a joint working party. I'm curious about the degree of liaison which has to date occurred between the two organisations, and continues to occur in relation to the RPTP rollout. And I guess I'm interested to understand, since we took that decision in July, the degree to which that collaboration has been formalised, and, you know, whether or not progress on this particular matter has been progressed beyond this exact, this report, or whether progress on the investigative work has effectively been stalled at that meeting time.
The investigatory, investigative work around possible transfer has been put on hold, or has not proceeded to any great extent, but there has been some collaboration with ORC, particularly around the possibility of a hub, and there has been some discussions with ORC staff around some options around that. And so, there has been ongoing collaboration, but in terms of consideration of a transfer that has not developed greatly, and hence why we're here to get a firm direction in terms of timing, to decide when that might reinvigorate or start again.
Your worship, I have flicked through the PAM as a set of resolutions which, yeah, might be a starting point for us in discussion, at a point that is helpful.
So, you're foreshadowing that you've got a motion, that's fine, I'll pick that up. So, let's get through questions, and then use perhaps your motion as a basis for further discussion. So, councillor Kelly.
What it seems to me from page 18, 12, 5, is that we really won't know much from you, because you don't have the information about the financial upside or the financial downside of us running, taking over the buses until maybe June 2018. Am I misreading this, or are you likely to be able to give us useful information about what risks we'd be taking in the up and downside financially before then?
That's correct to a certain extent. Certainly by June 2018, a lot of the financials will be a lot more robust. But likewise, earlier than that, some of the certainties, or uncertainties will become clear in terms of contract pricing, et cetera. What won't be known is, I suppose, is how the market responds to the patronage and demands, and how that compares to what might have been budgeted or expected.
Including, so we won't have the likely income figures until the end of that patronage period.
So, there'll be a budget...
But we also won't have the NZTA's June 2018, sort of co-investment thoughts on there being sort of a bit mean in general. So, that won't be known until then.
Certainly, there'll be a budget set up through this, the current RPTP process, there'll be budgets established, and there'll be co-investment amounts set with NZTA. It's, there will be another one developed in another two or three years as well. That's the next, the next RPTP will be developed, which again, they'll be revisiting, looking back, seeing how things have gone, and budgets developed accordingly.
So, when do you imagine you'd be able to give us financial information that would allow us to make a decision based on what if, what likely financial effect it would have on us for making the choice to take over the buses?
Generally, that, looking at the table, table one, June 2017 is when most of that, there's a reasonable level of information available in terms of the detail, the specifics, and actuals, et cetera.
Thank you. And just not a question for you, but if we're going to consider this, could we at all have a printout or something? I'd find it almost impossible to know. I can hardly read a long resolution like that, I can't.
Well, that's probably an opportune time that it's come, because as we did with councillor Thompson's point, we'll probably print this out. And since we're probably going to be mopping off in 10 minutes, I'm going to suggest that, given the substance of this particular issue, that we pick it up in the morning, that we close when we'll have question time, and then we'll get a printout of this, and we'll come back in the morning and start off fresh and do the whole thing in one hit, I think. So, let's work through the questions, councillor Benson.
Thank you. I'm reminded on page 18, 12, 3, by the second motion, it's repeated there, of existence of the unsuccessful attempt to get some revenue from the Transport Reserve Fund to meet our costs and the due diligence. Are we confident that should we proceed down the track of, as we go through this process, that the, that fund will be retained and will pass in due course to us?
At this stage, no, we don't have any confidence around that, because it's not clear to us what the level of reserves that would be, that may be available in some two to three years' time.
There is a substantial amount in that fund at this time, though, is there not?
Yes, I believe so, but there's a potential call on that fund for the integrated ticketing system that's running internationally.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Given, just looking at this timeline, and I realise that it's critical information availability dates, and not an exhaustive timeline of things to consider, but given that some of the concern raised at infrastructure services in July around the transfer of governance was the uncertainty of what we may be inheriting, given where we, where the regional council were at in developing the regional public transport plan, when would we expect the next round of that plan development to begin? Because I think that's a reasonable thing to consider in terms of potential governance transfers, because I'm assuming that we would want to have more of an input into the development of a plan were to be for something that we would be operating.
They would need to develop another one for the next three-year period, so for the 18, 21 period. So, I imagine they would start working on that about a year before it was needed, so probably in about two years' time. And the one that you sat on the hearings committee for has just, has been adopted, and I'm sure you're going to have copies for councillors of that one.
So, what would be the latest potential transfer date for us to be running the next RPTP process?
Just to clarify, questions, are they in terms of us running it our own, or in conjunction with?
Well, either, but I would ask another question in that how much input did staff feel they had in the previous, development of the previous RPTP, under its current governance arrangement?
We have had some involvement in the RPTV, that we've submitted on it, et cetera. And I think, though, that, you know, the reason why we're probably debating this over the past, as Ben and you expressed, that there's some more integration with the Deney City Council, particularly in our roading services, would be helpful. I don't think that perspective changed, changes greatly, even though it looks like the new RPTV is a significant improvement. I think that those fundamentals are still the same. But I think back to your earlier question around what would be a good timing, certainly indications are from the NZTA that the start, the transfer date, the start of a RPTP period, i.e. the three years, is preferable, but that would involve work in advance of that to achieve that date.
So, that would be...
That's the... Can you think of that to be, 1st of July 2018?
Councillor Pete.
You think, you said to some extent councillor Campbell asked back my questions, but I'm just, I'm wondering if you can get a comment about the public transport operating model, which has shifted the goalposts for contracting to quite an extent, and therefore kind of the whole, the whole financial situation of the, of public transport is kind of changing. And so, I understood you to say that... So I understood you to say that you think even under that arrangement by 2000, July 1, 2017, we would know kind of how that was working and would be in a position to take over the governance. Is that what you?
That's correct. Certainly a lot more information is available if you refer to that table, the sort of things that would have developed by that time and things that would become clear.
Even though the following year, the National Transport Programme or Plan, there'd be a new version of that coming out, wouldn't there? Which might change.
That's right.
The landscape again.
Yep, that's correct.
Anyway, a further question would be to do with the hint in the report that there is a trend of declining patronage. And I'm just, you talk about a financial risk of declining patronage. Did you mean to say that there is a trend that way now? Or?
No, not, no. Didn't mean to infer that at all.
It was just a hint.
Councillor Staines.
Just looking at, again, at the timetable, there's some significant, the most significant contracts are going to be developed by August 2016. What do you know about the term of those contracts? Are they three-year contracts? I know in the past, contracts have been as long as eight years.
Yeah, we don't know explicitly, but the general principle around the PETA on the public transport operating model, which is a new initiative or new approach that's been put out by government, is that they are much longer-term contracts. And I'm surmising that they would range in the range of five to seven years. But that's still at the discretion of the council, as to decide how it might procure and the strategy it takes around those contract durations.
So in terms of looking at the other side of the risk, if we as a council were of the opinion that the governance of our public transport should be with the city council rather than ORC, we would lose our flexibility if we did not have that intent clearly defined and a strong input into those contracts that lead up into 2016. Otherwise, if you decide to take it over from 18, you could find you have contracts that give you total lack of flexibility to change anything, which is the whole intent of us being involved in the first place for quite a number of years. So it seems to me that while this is aiming to be risk-free for one set of criteria, maybe it has another set of risks on the other side, that we in fact have a situation where the regional council has locked in a lot of things that we don't agree with, which means that it's unpalatable for us or very expensive for us to take it over with the inability to change it. So have you given any consideration to the other side, that the contracts are the core? And if those contracts signed in August 2016 are long-term contracts, then we're left in a position where it's very costly to change quickly or you have to live with them, taking all the brunt of the public dislike for them. No, it, just the other side of the balance.
It's a fair comment. And you're right that there is a risk, depending on the nature of the contracts that they enter into and the prices they get for those, that does pose a risk for us and whether we would want to take the governance over. We haven't considered it explicitly at this stage, but we do understand that's present.
You put the questions. Okay, with them done, I'm going to cool the meeting to an end now, but I'm going to ask Pam to arrange to have the motion, the resolution printed and it'll be on the big printer. So it'll be emailed to everyone and there'll be hard copies for the, I'll be late in the morning.
Well, I don't know, you wish, if you would like me to give a brief overview now or would you prefer me to do that tomorrow?
I think it's the end of a long day. I think it would be better later in the morning, start fresh. People will have had time to absorb some of this.
Well, if I may just very briefly say, it is just me as a start for discussion and if there are other people who have views that they feel should be incorporated, then please send them through to me overnight and see if we can work them in.
Thank you. Thank you all. I think we made quite a lot of progress on this date. Good morning, everyone. We're getting underway again. Welcome. First item on our agenda this morning is the presentation from the Chair of the Waukawee Division, Mr Jared Colling. So welcome, Jared.
Thank you, me Kelvett, councillors, Sue and staff. As I was driving in over the hill this morning, I was starting to think, well, what am I going to say in support of what I've written, you will have obviously read. And then I started thinking back about the history of Dunedin. And yes, the city has been around for quite some time. And so has Waukawee. Waukawee actually celebrates its 175th anniversary this year. But the Dunedin City Council turned 25 last November. And I think that can't be overlooked as you start through your deliberations today. Dunedin City Council is an amalgamation of a number of different local authorities, including the area that I represent. When I think back over the last 25 years, our community has done pretty well. And for that, we thank you and the councillors that stood before you. But as we go forward, we need to continue to ensure that we provide a safe, healthy, inspired community environment for our residents. Council have had some hard times recently. It hasn't all been positive, but I don't think we should lose sight of the positive work and the achievements that this council has made over the last 25 years. I think overall, you can be reasonably proud. The matters raised in my presentation, if I can just take you through them, and I won't go through all of them because I know time's reasonably precious, but there are some key ones that I want to just focus on. First of all, the Waukawee Transfer Station. The board are asking that, and we're pleased to see that funding remains for the transfer station, but we're asking that staff involve us in the development of the concept for that station so that we can look at recycling initiatives that minimise the cost to council in the ongoing operation. The sewerage treatment schemes in our areas are coming up for consent renewals. And again, we ask the council, seek that staff actively involve us in the discussions about the infrastructure that will serve our communities over the next 50-odd years. We applaud council considering developing a volunteer policy in communities such as ours, where the communities are close knit. The use of volunteers can be a great asset to council in achieving their goals. Mount Wauken Reserve, and I know that the councillors that have been sitting around this table have heard me harp on year in, year out about let's maintain the values of the reserve. Well, now we're heading into an LTP process. Now's the time for council to set aside some funds to actually develop a reasonable, robust development plan for that reserve that sees it protected for the future generations. I'm not suggesting that we want to allow funds in this LTP for the physical works, but we must prepare for the next one. Council's projected revenue stream shows that there is some room to manoeuvre, not in this coming LTP, but the following. And I'm identifying to you that the Mount Wauken Reserve is an asset that this city runs the risk of destroying. We as a council need to ensure it's preserved. If we can't preserve it, get it to someone else. The board are reasonably pleased to see that landfill charges are not being raised this year. We've expressed previously some concern about the impact that the increased landfill fees have had and the behaviour of some members in our community and the wider city community with the treatment of their waste. While there is no excuse for any inappropriate behaviour, we do not want to encourage by increased charges from that happening. We're appreciative of the work the staff are doing at the moment, monitoring the Waukawee Beach area, and we request that that continue. We also would like to see that continue on and be extended to the Karatani and also the Warrington Beaches. Watari toilets, it's fair to say the board is a bit disappointed with the progress that's happened on that. There have been a number of hurdles and there are some concerns, but we still believe there is a toilet required for this particular community, for the general public, and will continue to work on that initiative. The board discretionary fund, we're appreciative of the £10,000. We have been appreciative of the £10,000 for about nine years. If there was any chance of some increase, that would be very, very much appreciated. We continue to support council's endeavour to reduce the debt burden on the city and support the transfer surpluses towards that debt. We note in council's agenda, excuse me. Now fluoridation for some of our communities may well be a consideration. We ask if council are considering that, that before any decisions made, you actively and targetedly consult with the communities affected. I would hate to see council spend money where it wasn't necessarily wanted. And finally, we welcome the opportunity in supporting council in consulting on the draft LTP when it's released and offer any help that we can to ensure our community is well-informed, well-educated and given every opportunity to provide a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Do you want to take your question?
Yes, I do.
Questions, councillors. Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, Jared. The question I have just relates to Mount Wauken. Have you guys noticed significant degradation of the quality of that reserve in the last 12 months, such that your call to action is so much stronger this year? Or is it a generic concern that has existed over several years? Because I know that that certainly has been, you've brought it to us several times.
Personally, I haven't observed any significant degradation. However, I'm aware that staff's programmes are primarily around pest animal, not pest plant. There are no known pest plants within that particular reserve. And if they're not maintained, then they can only be but extending. And the reason why I'm putting some focus on it this year is we're being mindful of the fact that council has been stretched for funding. The next three years should allow adequate time for a comprehensive development plan to be created, which will then allow for funding to be included in the following LTP. So it's purely about timing.
So the existing management plan you'd like to see a review of?
That is correct. And enhanced into a comprehensive development plan.
Right. Thank you.
Just following up on that, Jared, you made a comment that if council can't look after it, somebody can. Fair enough comment. You'll be aware that there are models for management by community trusts in various situations. Hara Wika Harbour Cone is one, and we're developing one in Pokakura, Tairol Head. Is that something that you fear would be appropriate to consider?
It's certainly something that should be considered. However, in the absence of a trust, the responsibility falls back to council.
I appreciate that. What I'm asking is, would you view the consideration of the possibility of a trust as positive?
Yes.
Thank you. Quick, move through the questions, councillors. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your submission. Right, councillors, we'll move on now to where we left off yesterday, and that is on Public Transport Governance. And we have a motion. Councillor, is there, councillor McTavish, you've got a motion, and I understand that with the help of some of your colleagues, amended it from what was printed last night, and that's with Pam. So you're moving it and?
Yep. So I have just sent through, sorry Pam, a new version. Pam's already formatted it three times, I think.
Can we have it sent through too?
So I've just sent it through to Pam and to everybody. So it should be in your emails.
So is there a second? Councillor Staines, would you like to speak to it?
Before I do, I'm just going to highlight the things that have changed since last night. I have had feedback from councillors, Staines, Calvert and Sandy Graham as the governance manager. The substantive changes have come as a result of Sandy's feedback, which is that a working party, the rules that govern a working party are such that a working party probably wouldn't be the appropriate mechanism. So it needs to be a forum of some description, whether that's a joint committee or a subcommittee or something else. That's yet to be determined. So I've simply used the words a joint forum to represent the fact that it would be of some joint nature, but we don't know what yet. So there is a change to that wording and a request that the chief executive in the report back to the 23rd Feb meeting of council with advice on progress and advice around what that structure looks like. The word approach has been changed to reapproach because I understand this approach has been made previously. Is that all that we changed as a result of that, Sandy? I think, yeah. The feedback that I had from councillor Calvert was the word reconfirm in the first sentence should be changed to confirm, given that there had been water under the bridge since the last time that we confirmed it. So, yeah, so that's why I've changed reconfirm to confirm. And councillor Staines's feedback was that he believed 2017 was too late, given the contractual arrangements that were going to be made and that if we wanted to do this, we should be aiming to do it earlier. So I've changed that to 2016. I think it probably will be subject of some discussion, so that's there for the purposes of discussion. So with those changes, and speaking to the motion, I guess, in considering this issue, I thought a lot about what we discussed at our last meeting that discussed this matter, which is the nature of risk. So we talked a lot about risk in relation to a governance transfer, and I tried to identify for me what the nature of that risk was. So the public transport system in Dunedin is currently run for rate payers. Those are Dunedin rate payers who pay the ORC for that service. If it transferred to the DCC, it would be the same rate payers who were affected by that change. So I think we should be considering the risk to the service that is provided to those residents. residents, not an organisational risk or a reputational risk for our organisation, which I think would be an unfortunate focus. There are three elements of risk that I identified in any governance transfer. There are elements of operational risk, there are elements of financial risk, and there are strategic risks. In terms of the operational risks, with any transfer of governance or anything like that, there is a degree of risk around the change, or the change of staff from one organisation to another, the relationships that need to be rebuilt, the possible disruption that occurs to operational issues as a, as a result of that. I think that these would be limited in time and reasonably limited in scope, and we could manage them. And if we put enough safety nets around that, if we, if we have a joint management committee or something in place which helps with that skill transfer, I think they can be reasonably well managed. There are degrees of financial risk, and I acknowledge that the Otaka Regional Council is in a better financial position currently to, to manage, I guess, large changes in the ways that, that services are being run, simply because they probably have a, a better financial position to, to absorb any big shocks that might exist. I think there are, there are two things about that, though. The first is that it is the same residents that pay the same rates. So, so that doesn't change significantly with the transfer. The second thing is that any, any organisation that is governing a body is only willing to put in so much money into a service. So I'm not sure that just because the Otaka Regional Council has a healthier balance sheet necessarily means that we would see a significantly larger amount of money going into that service. The final element of risk which I considered was a strategic risk, and that was the risk that was considered, or considered most importantly by the report that we commissioned last year, which identified three ways in which strategically the city council is better aligned to deliver that, to deliver the public transport service. For me, this is the biggest risk. The biggest risk is that we don't get our public transport planning right in the context of our integrated transport strategy, in the context of our central city plan, which is a once in a generation opportunity to improve the way that our, our central city works for our residents, in the context of our spatial plan, which, which has good public transport absolutely at its core. So I have concern that, as it currently stands, with public transport operations and planning sitting in one organisation, and everything else to do with public transport and implementation of our strategic framework for the city in another organisation, that is certainly not optimising the strategic outcomes in relation to risk for our city. And I think that that is the biggest, that has the biggest ongoing or long-term risk, and the biggest risk in terms of magnitude for the residents who pay for that service. So that's why I think we need to transfer this service. I acknowledge that there is due diligence that needs to be done. I also acknowledge that there is no way that we can get the amount of information that we need to make a final decision about when it is most appropriate to do this without having an ongoing and meaningful conversation with our colleagues at the Otaka Regional Council. And that is why I'm proposing the approach which is on the board there, which is a nominal date for the purposes of working towards a transfer, coupled with putting in place a working party, well not a working party, a joint forum of some description that will monitor those that work and try to ensure that we are maximising the opportunities in terms of strategic, the strategic opportunities of a transfer whilst mitigating any risks associated with it. So this is the best that I could come up with, with the input of the chair of Wascun and various others. If, if there are improvements that could be made to this, I'd be really delighted to hear it, but I think that we, we do need to provide a degree of certainty for staff who are working towards a date, and that's why a nominal date has been provided.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Thompson.
It's a question rather than a, a comment, but I'm just, I just want to understand what, a little more about your concept of forum. What, what, what a forum, what, what it's, what its terms of reference would be and how it would operate? And who it would be?
So in terms of the terms of reference, a broad scope for those has been included in three. Which are those four points there? In terms of how it would operate and who would be members of it, I think that will depend a bit on the advice that comes from staff and from the chief executive. It could be that the Otaka Regional Council say that they are not willing to contemplate this, in which case we're back to square one. But, and it could be that we are legally bound to not have staff involved, for example, in that membership. It may be that if it's, if it's a subcommittee, then that needs to be a governance arrangement. So I don't feel able at this point in time to put any parameters around who those people are without that advice from, from chief executive, once she's had those conversations.
I'm happy to create this question and you can come back and speak later if you want, if that's what, so we'll move on, councillor Bezir.
Well, my question is similar to councillor Thompson, and I have real concerns about the makeup of this forum. I'd want to be assured, I mean, I have a, a serious suspicion or doubt, I suppose, there's a predetermined agenda behind this resolution because it's coming from the council and as we are approaching the regional council. So there has been a lot of thought put into the approach that we make to the council. And therefore there are councillors who are determined that, or want this to happen, the, for the taking over of the public transport. And, and for their own reason, that's fine, I have no problems with that. But equally, there are councils who are opposed to it, and I would expect and like to think, and I want to be reassured, because I could support this resolution, if there was going to be a balanced membership on that forum. So if you do have, for example, people who are firmly for the approach that, that we have made to the regional council, equally, we should have members in there that are opposed to it. And I would like to think that was going to happen. So I'm very interested to see how that forum or working party or whatever you'd like to call it is made up, because it's a very important part of the process, because that, that group will report back to council, and they will be the group that do all the work, and there's going to be a lot of work involved in looking at this issue. So I would like to think it was a balanced, fair group that actually makes the decision to come back to council with any recommendations.
I think in regard to that, I might suggest that councillor McTavish address what was essentially your question, and that is why there is a need, why she says a need for a forum and what it would do. Because I suspect that you, what you think its purpose would be or its task would be is different from what's conceived in this resolution. And I, I understand this resolution to mean, to, to mean that we decide in principle that it would be a good thing for the DCC to take over the governance, and subsequent to that, because of the ramifications of ORC investment and things that we would have to bear the consequences of later, that the forum would work through the development of any of those investments together, so that this council is not picking up the responsibility for decisions made without our input. That's what I understood. To me, I didn't understand it to be a forum that would decide if it was worthwhile taking over the governance. That's not what I understood, but I invite the mover to clarify that if that's, if I got it wrong.
Well, I, I think your wish is probably is a little bit of both. I think at this stage, what I'm saying is with the evidence available to us, I think we, or my personal view is that we should confirm in principle that we feel that it's a good idea, because that's what the evidence tells me, and my weight, my weighing of risk tells me. But having said that, there is an amount of due diligence which needs to be done, and there, there clearly is a consultation process with our community that needs to be done. And I don't think that at this point we can say absolutely firmly and without any doubt that this is the best approach. I think that the, the forum, the joint forum that councillor Bezir asks about will have to have a degree of curiosity in relation to that and ensure that that due diligence and that consultation is done in a rigorous manner. And to that end, I think that having a balanced committee or group is, is worthwhile. I know when we put together a Three Waters Working Party, I was a sceptic on that, and, and it was really important to have balanced views and questions coming through that. So I don't have a problem with what is being proposed.
Yeah, that's, that's, the, the, there is a, because the councils are reconfirmed it's in principle support, one could take from that, that, that the council does actually support this, this approach. But my understanding of the in principle is that we have to do this, we have to make the first step in principle before we can go on to the next step, which is to make the real decision. And I'm hoping that as long as council is very clear on that issue, then I'm happy to support it. But if we are saying today that in principle we're supporting it, therefore we will go on to actually implement the change, then I'm opposed to it. But I think there is merit in looking at the issue, as long as the forum or working party, as I said before, has balanced representation.
Well, I think that the answer to your question is that it is as you initially mentioned, that it's in principle, and the response from the mover was that because due diligence was still required, that it wasn't cast in. councillor Bezir.
I didn't really have much of an issue with a working party, you know, trying to go through the, the practicalities of whether this is a good idea. And the main reason I didn't mind a working party is that a working party isn't allowed to make decisions or recommendations. The suggestion here is that this forum or whatever wants to go further. I used to, in fact, for many years advocated that the DCC was the obvious group to run the local bus transport system. And this despite the fact that, as councillor McTavish has said, the ORC have a healthier balance sheet, they can really afford to do it and afford to do the upgrades that are required, and also despite the fact that the ORC have had quite a lot of public transport experience, which we do not. Despite those things, because of, quite frankly, a not very good job the ORC was making in public transport, I felt that the DCC was, would be able to make a better job of that. A number of things have changed in the last year, which have caused me to change my view. I no longer think that the DCC is in a position to be the best operator of the transportation system. And the two original reasons that I've just highlighted are still there. The ORC still has a healthier balance sheet, they can still afford to do upgrades. The ORC have the public transport experience that we don't. But there's some more reasons that I perceive have come along. And one of them is that in the last year or so especially, the ORC have reorganised and have improved delivery of a number of things that they used to do. And I think their new chief executives had quite a bit to do with that. They have improved their bus service quite significantly in the last year or so. And the kind of quite serious complaints that used to be made of the bus service, I feel aren't quite there anymore. So the ORC have lifted their game. And then the, the, the next real issue is, for me, that we now have a very, very significant drop in fuel prices. And what the drop in fuel prices does is it favours the economics of private motor vehicles. It doesn't favour public transport. Public transport has major costs with paid drivers, with quite a lot of infrastructure, with inflexibility. Much cheaper fuel is going to make the economics of running a public transport system much, much more difficult. And again, the ORC is in a better position to be able to do that. So my previous support of the DCC taking over the buses, despite the fact that there were going to be quite a lot of costs involved in, in the change, despite the fact that there was probably going to be an enormous amount of capital required to produce a hub so that the bus system could be better organised, I'm now of the view that the ORC are actually in a better position, certainly in the foreseeable future, the next five to 10 years of this plan, to continue running the buses. They have lifted their game significantly. The fuel price works against anything that we might try to do with public transport. And for that reason, I believe that it's no longer such a good idea for the DCC to try and take over public transport.
councillor Noam.
Thank you. We should mine as a question, so if I can reserve my right to speak. It's either for Sarah or Jean, but in the report that's in front of us on four and five, pages four and five, it talks about the critical information availability dates. And with the, the recommendation in front of us, the date, the provisional target transfer date is suggested to be 1 July 2016. I just wondered whether you, one of you could comment on those key dates between the period of August 2016 and June 2017, and the importance of that information, that if we were to support the recommendation in front of us, we wouldn't have that information, and how important would that be to the council to minimise risk going into this potential new venture?
Is that on there? So the key information that comes out is around the contract prices of the nets in August 2016, with contracts, two, three and prices availability. That's probably, that's probably the bigger, bigger milestone and thing that gives us greater certainty, or would provide greater certainty at that stage. I'd just like to point out, though, that also, as you go to the bottom of page five or eight, twelve, five, in terms of timeframe for running an investigation, which is sort of, for any timeframe that you do, assuming a 1 July sort of takeover, a transfer point, is that generally it would be desirable to be doing the due diligence or investigation in March to June, the year prior to that, and then running, once a decision in principle has been made, to run a consultation process after that. So that sort of sets that timeframe. So in terms of what's proposed there with the provisional date of 1 July 16, that means that we'd be essentially embarking on that very soon, which does introduce, I suppose, a challenge in terms of March, start time of gearing up with an agreement with the ORC and formulation of the forum in its nature and its roles and responsibilities. So there is, it does introduce new risk in that regard with that timeframe as well.
As for that, with the question, so probably looking potentially at an additional staff member to conduct that, that investigation?
Not necessarily. There is, previously we budgeted this 150... There is, previously we budgeted this $150,000 on the current budget. Here there's a, there's some work carried out in the start of that due diligence, the vast majority of that is still available. So that's a resource that would support that investigation.
Good thinking.
Councillor Cowan. What I really like about these resolutions is that it's an ongoing and increasing opportunity and obligation to play nice with the regional council. They've shown willing, in my view, to look at the buses and they're proposing an overhaul of routes and all sorts of things that is very similar to the one we would have done had we done it. What I really feel hugely uncomfortable about is where it goes on to make the assumption that we would be transferring governance of the public bus service before the dates when we could possibly have the information we need to make that decision. So we would have had to decide effectively this year to make a decision to do it next year when we know that we don't have, having been told by our staff, the information we would need to make the proper financial decision before a year after we'd taken it over. And bearing in mind that a lot of what the regional, we would want to do, and the regional council is already doing, what we are actually waiting for is not losing us an opportunity for a generation or putting in with our strategy. What we're doing is waiting to see what happens with the proposal that is very similar to what we would have done and waiting to leave the financial burden of the change with an organization that's quite frankly better off than us. Most of my issue however, so I don't see much of an upside in taking it over because they're already doing a lot of what we would do anyway. There's a huge downside probably in us taking it over and we simply don't have the information and we will not have the information before even the takeover date, let alone the time we would have to commit really to getting on with that. This, I would much prefer to see the last resolution we made on this topic was that sufficient information to enable a decision to proceed or not with a change of public transport governance be brought to council as soon as possible. I'd much prefer to see a resolution here that fleshes out that bringing information to council as soon as possible. And as soon as possible seems to me can't actually be before we can know the significant financial issues. And also that encourages us to, in finding out that information, do a lot more playing nice with the regional council so we're dealing with it in a joint sort of sense if they will let us, and I think they probably will, because we're having input into some of the changes anyway. They're making most of the changes we wanted, so we have more input into that, then we get the best of both worlds, no financial risk and not much changes would happen if we took it over. I realize that there's some impetus here to do it within this triennium and I don't think it's a good thing to dim that when we just don't have the information. We are not going to be in a position to make this financial decision. And so doing it by stealth through the let's agree in principle if it's feasible and then the transfer date will be. So giving it some legs as a thing that we've decided to do, it's just a matter of sorting out the detail, is not the way to go here. I liked that resolution that we lasted and I think what we should do now is flesh out that and play nice more with the regional council about it.
Councillor Wilson.
I appreciate that this is not necessarily an easy choice, but I think we have to start looking at it. And I take you to the front page of section 11, which actually says even in our, it's a perception thing who runs the buses. And at the moment, we keep on getting submissions on the buses, people think we do run it and we've got no say on how it operates, even though we're happy to see that the regional council is pushing more to the way we're doing it. But if you look at the front page, the front page of section 11, it actually says that we, we run public transport or we have an influence on it. We don't. And we need to get to the point where it is an integrated part of not only our transport system, but our planning and a whole lot of other parts. So I think anything that gets us in a better position to look at is what may end up as a joint governance. It may not be going the whole way. And in theory, we may just say, shall we just want to have a joint working party that works on this long term, but we have to have an ambition of going at least some of that way to seeing about that governance. I, and financially, the risk is the risk to the whole city. It isn't actually a risk to our council. The risk is that we don't do this well or that there, that there will be cost blowouts. It's actually still a risk to the same rate pass. It's not a risk, it's, and maybe we have to, it's who carries that. It's going to be the rate pass. Who carries the perception of having failed, that's going to be a council. But if it's done collectively, then it actually is a burden shared. We, what we have to concentrate on is getting the best thing for the city, not worrying about who has to take the blame if we get it wrong. Because if we don't have everyone working to getting the best result, actually we're not working on what we should be doing as councillors. So my, my reason for supporting this is to say, how can we get the best result, the best feed in from the city staff into the ORC as they plan forward for the contracts? How we can get the best information out about how they plan to get, and the costs? How we can plan best to get the best hub working for the city, not only commercially, or sorry, as a transport system, but as commercially as well? I think that it requires us to be integrated with the regional council and be in there with a working party to do that work. So I'm going to support it. I'm not saying that I'm going to support the end result, because I don't know what that recommendation is going to be, but at least let's start working together to get the best result for the city. I am slightly concerned that I think we had a previous resolution that talked about Queenstown Lakes District Council, because they will have to be part of that process because P T is run by the ORC, not just for Dunedin City Council, but for Queenstown Lakes. And we need to keep them on board because it changes that balance for the cost systems for them. So I think the previous, I just reminded that and that it requires some inclusion somewhere along the way. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. I have a question for staff and then a few brief comments. In terms of risk, the staff have a view which presents the greater risk to us not having information around initial patronage trends as a result of the RPTP or not having a meaningful input into the negotiations for the copper contracts two, three and four, which will be for some years after they are signed.
It's very difficult that you, you were in terms of the, the two sides to, I suppose. But that is a very difficult one towards this at this stage. We just simply, it's been very hard for us to give a definitive answer to what's the greater risk.
I think the, you understand the risks there. I think it's more your call around the weighting of those risks rather than the staff. What we can really do is advise that this is the information that we've got. After that, it's a call that you need to make around that risk and have a judge there.
As councillor Wilson has, has alluded to, one of our stated community objectives is that Dunedin's public transport system meets our community needs in the city profile that we approved to go out for consultation yesterday. We state ourselves that 34% of people think our bus system is affordable, 46% say it's easy to use and 44% of people think it's frequent, fewer than half the population across what we know are the three main drivers of increased public transport use. And if it were an in-house department that was returning such feedback from our community, I'm sure it would set all sorts of alarm bells around this table and rightly so. Both the Dunedin City Council and the Ataga Regional Council want to improve those figures. But I think even given the stronger relationship and more open relationship we have between those two institutions now than we have previously, neither are equipped to do so as well as they might given the current division of labour around, around planning in Dunedin. We talk about how we can make best use of our roading network and yet don't have any direct influence over how our public transport system works, which is one of the main parts of that puzzle. The regional council, when we were working through the regional public transport plan, we're looking at how they could encourage better use of the bus service, but have no direct influence over the provision and pricing of car parking, for example, which is one of the drivers that could be used to do just that. Ideally, you would have public transport sitting under the governance of a local authority that can control all of those jigsaw pieces. And the city council, I believe, is the only one of those two who have the capacity to do it. There is, you know, the basic democratic argument as well in that I'm uncomfortable with politicians elected to represent the communities in Wanaka and Queenstown, for example, having such influence over how the public transport system works in Dunedin. I think these are decisions, these important decisions are best left to our, to our communities and the DCC is best suited to, to play out that role. I was initially concerned with the targeted transfer date of 2017 and am more comfortable with 2016 for reasons alluded to earlier in my questions for staff. And that is, I think, the negotiation of those contracts, contracts two, three and four, which make up a substantial part of our bus network are the most critical deadline in this timeline that we've presented in this report. We can wait indefinitely for more information and more information, or we can take an option that gives us greater control of our own destiny, as it were. So I'm supportive of this and pleased that this is still very much on the agenda and look forward to hearing the community feedback when, when that pours in, as I'm sure it will. Thanks.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I've been very cautious about this, transferred and voted against it originally. I can support this motion because it seems to me that, I think we've got to make a distinction between two things. One is the operational running of the buses. And I frankly don't care where that sits. I care about how well it's run, but I don't make an assumption that we can do it better. And I think that that, I suppose part of my reticence originally was that I actually felt that there was almost a feeling that somehow we were a superior form of decision maker and transferring it to us would, would demonstrate that. And I didn't share that view. So, but I think that, so there's the operational running of the buses, but I think that the more important thing is around how we get an appropriate level of strategic dialogue between the two organizations. And I think that's where we've struggled. And so I, and I absolutely believe we need that because it isn't just the operational running of them, it's how you integrate that into the development plans for the city, into the strategic direction of the city. And, and those are long-term questions. And I, I take councillor Vandebus's point that there are going to be short-term or even medium-term things that will affect these decisions. But what you do around how you develop your roading system or where you put a bus transfer system, those are long-term decisions. You, you don't revise those every five years. And so the danger for me is that we don't find an appropriate and respectful way to develop a dialogue with the regional council to work in the interests of the city. And I think we've struggled to do that and I'm not attributing blame to either party for that. I just think it's been a difficult thing to do. If, if the intention and the reason I ask the question about what, what do you envisage your forum as being? I mean, a forum to me might hopefully lead on to something more default. And it, it might be something that has a terms of reference that says, look, we, we, we're going to agree that what strategic directions are important for the city and whether the regional council shares those views. And if they do, then well and good, there's some things that will flow from that. If they don't, how might that difference in opinion affect the decisions that are made? And then around what's the, the governance and operational interaction that's got to take place to ensure that that shared vision is actually implemented? And at the moment I sense, and I, I don't know, I could be quite wrong, but I sense that in the past, the interaction has been at a operational level and not sufficiently at a governance level. And it may be that at an operational level, it hasn't necessarily been at the highest levels either. I don't know, that's just an assumption. But if we can put something together in a respectful way that recognizes their experience, their abilities, the abilities of the people working there and says, and says, can we find a way to work together around a strategic direction and what that means for us, then if that gets us in that direction, then I'm supportive of this and will support it for that reason. I don't think it necessarily follows that that means we take over the ownership. Don't think anything necessarily follows. There's no point in having a forum if you've already predetermined what the outcomes are.
Thank you, councillor Staines.
This is never going to be an easy decision. And, and I think all of us, many of councillors around the table who may comment so far, have talked about risk. There will be risk and there's no way that we would wish to take over public transport without doing robust due diligence. And these resolutions do not suggest that. I think the issue is more about, do we wish to control our destiny in terms of public transport and the impact that that public transport network has on our city as a place to live and the direction that we want to see our city go? Or do we want to have that in the hands of another body? Now, I accept that there has been a lift in the game of the I R C. But I think councillor Hawkins made a good point. The I R C has a significant number of its governance members as regional members. Their votes still count when it comes to deciding what's good for public transport in Dunedin. So there is a risk there, which if we do not control that governance, that we will not do what we want. While some form of joint management group may bring about a better integration of our vision and our goals for our city with the, for the public transport network and what is actually delivered, that, that has a risk attached to it in that, that the I R C councillors could choose to take away or ignore our requests because they are, at the end of the day, the people who control and govern public transport. So I think the thing that we have to focus our thoughts on today is, do we wish and do we believe that by having direct governance of public transport in the city, that we will then have control of our destiny? Now, that doesn't bring into account whether we will do it well or badly. One would hope that we would do the work and do it well. What it does do is say, it will succeed or fail, it will do what we want for our city or not, based on the governance decisions we make, not on the governance decisions that a body that represents the region makes. So I think firstly, that's, that's what we have to decide. And I think it's a case of, we either have to do the work or get off the can. So we can't expect ORC, I don't think, to allow us to make decisions or input strongly into routes, into the contracts that deliver those services, into where a bus hub might be or the format that hub might be, whether or not all our buses travel through the main street of Dunedin or get out of the main street and make the environment better. street of Dunedin, or get out of the main street and make the environment better. Those are things that, you know, if you're controlling the funding, you make those decisions. So if we want to control our destiny, we have to accept that with that will come risk. Some of those risks are neutral. Government reduces its funding, it affects the IRC's model, it affects our model. If fuel prices drop and there's less patronage on buses, their financial effect's the same for both. The IRC would have to increase the charges on the buses, or increase its rating burden, same rate payers. So in a way, those things, to me, appear to be neutral. There is other risks which we won't concede. But that's part of life. The things we govern now, we face those risks. So I think councillors, the decision we make today has to be, do we wish to control the destiny of public transport? And if we do, then we need to get on with approaching IRC, seriously doing the due diligence and getting on with it. And I think, for me, we have to make those decisions in a timeframe that allows the contracts that will be signed to reflect what we want. So that's where I'd be focusing my views.
Thank you councillor Bezette.
Look, we're not debating whether we're going to do this or not today. The issue really is whether or not we're going to set up a forum that's going to look at the issue. That's as simple as that, and I support that. And we've got to do it in a way that allows an appropriate timeframe. What councillor McTavish is suggesting with her resolution is that we set up a forum, or a working party, or whatever you want to call it, she set this forum, so, and report back at the February council meeting. That is far too soon, in my view. We could be looking at a membership of, we could even have international members on that forum, people who would be able to give us the appropriate advice. So I think that the timeframe is far too tight, so I would ask initially if councillor McTavish is prepared to extend the reporting back of the membership of the forum to, say, June. If not, I will move a separate resolution, that that is a casual amendment, if you like. But that could be set back so that we have time to look at getting the appropriate people onto that forum. And the other one, I would, the other alteration I'd like, and I'd ask councillor McTavish to once again consider this, but if she doesn't, then I'll move a separate amendment. And that is to go back to the original timeframe, July the first, 2017. Now, I suspect that she may not be happy with that, or others may not be happy with that, but I would move that if that's not, if the councillor McTavish is not prepared to move on that. And the reason I say that is because we need, we need the time. If it was July of next year, that's what, two or three months out from elections, there's a lot of information that needs to come through that we will not have until sometime towards the end of next year. So I'm suggesting the July 2017 timeframe. Two changes I'd like, one, the reporting back on the makeup of the forum to June this year, and the other one is extending the possible transfer date to July 2017. I'm asking initially if councillor McTavish will agree to those changes. If she won't, I'll move them as an amendment.
Well, I'll put it to the mover in second. I would point out the wording of three two, which is the second one you wish to amend, as it says possible transfer provisional target date, but it's up to the mover in second.
So, sorry, I had enough, I may have missed exactly what it was that you were wanting to change here. So you're wanting to change the 23rd February date to June?
Yes.
Yeah. And then you're seeking a change from first of July, it should say first of July 2016, Pam, rather than just July 2016. You're seeking to change that to 2017?
Yes. And I'd really like some staff feedback on this, because I know there's a lot of information that's coming through, and I think that we will need, that we won't have until sometime in July, by July 16th. So to me, we're making a decision on information that we haven't got at that stage.
So in relation to the second one, my sense is that it is effectively a provisional date, that it is mitigated by three three, which basically says the governance forum that we establish needs to review that provisional date when it gets up and running, and come back to us with a recommendation about that date. What I, I think the benefit of setting the 2016 date is, is that it gets us off the ground and actually doing something, rather than sitting around and thinking about it for another two years. And the reason I think getting off the ground and doing something, and I support the 23rd February date is important, is because the Otaga Regional Council want to have their bus hub up and running by November 2015. So unless we establish a joint forum sooner rather than later, we're going to miss the opportunity to have dialogue with the Otaga Regional Council in an in-depth way about that very important decision. And so for me, getting the thing off the ground and running as soon as possible, and if the chief executive comes back on 23rd of February and says it's not possible to do this in this timeframe, I'm relaxed about that. But I would like us to set more aspirational targets rather than looser targets, so that we have the opportunity, or we maximize the opportunities, to input on three one, which is, is nothing to do with transfer, it's all about the Regional Public Transport Plan and implementing that, and implementing things like the bus hub. So, sorry, that's probably a long-winded way of saying, my preferences for what's on the board, and I won't...
Can I make a suggestion that, the way the compromise here, that the case for the initial kickoff is governed by what you've said about the November 2015 hub finish, but that date to get going is probably prudent, but that, the, given that the three two, that's the first of July 2016 date is provisional anyway, that that could be relaxed to 2017, because it's going to be reported back on, as you've said, with whatever the date is. And that's my suggestion.
Well, I guess I would seek input from staff on that. The reason, I originally, when I first drafted these motions, didn't even have a provisional date. The feedback from staff was that a provisional date was really important to them, in order to provide a marker to work to. If staff's advice is that it's not as important, then I don't feel as concerned about what the provisional date is. So if staff could advise as to the relative importance of the provisional date, given that it is softened somewhat by three three anyway, then I would appreciate commenting.
Provisional date is important to us, the target, it does help. Although in this case with the July 16th, it will be quite ambitious to achieve, in my opinion. So whether it needs to be something that's achievable and reasonably realistic from a due diligence and perspective.
Well, I don't know, I'm, yeah, personally, the reason I changed it is because the second day suggested 2016. If the second day is happy with 2017, then I'll go with it, but if he's not, the reasons pertaining to contracts, you know, I'm happy to stick with it.
If we put 2017, we will never make 2016. If we put 2016, it might be 2016 or 2017. So we can only do what we can do. I know 2016 is without doubt ambitious. 2016 would be impossible if we don't even form the joint committee until June, to be fair. I think we'd need to be, and the IRC would both need to be reasonably comfortable by June, July, August, something like that, of the year before, to be in a position to do the transfer on that date. And so you certainly couldn't achieve that in a couple of months, I don't think. So quickly forming joint governance, that doesn't, that doesn't mean you can't use international people as, in an advisory capacity, but it would mean they wouldn't hold a governance role. I don't know if that makes any difference to you. I think 2016 is very ambitious, but I think it would be fair to say you'd rule it out altogether if you put 2017 on the board, for what that's worth.
Okay, so I need a, I need a, a mover in second as to what date.
I'm not too worried about a change in date, but my view is, in asking Ginty to put 16 as the date, is unless we have a genuine intention, given that the due diligence makes us comfortable to proceed, unless we go in with a genuine view, then why would the IRC allow us to have a significant input, or a controlling input, i.e. we get what we want from the decisions that they will be doing? So, you know, it's that, we'll come in, we're going to take it over, but we'll make our decision on this date somewhere out in the future, but because we're going to do it, we want you to make all these decisions, and then we turn around and say, well, all the decisions are made the way we wanted them, we think that's too much risk, we're going to walk away now. So I think that the sum, for me, it's getting to that point where there is some understanding between the parties. It's, I certainly wouldn't want to rush it. So provisional is there to say it can be moved out, but what that provisional date of 2016 does is it focuses, focuses those people who are charged with doing the work on trying to get to that date. If they can't make it by that date, then the date will move because it's provisional.
I think your worship, your mover and second are saying that they would prefer to stick with one July 2016 and...
As a provisional.
Right, okay. Given the best of case, there's also a couple of people who just want to contribute, so I'm going to ask councillor Calvert and councillor Wilson, councillor Calvert, you?
Yes, I have actually spoken, I've got a question.
So I appreciate that, this one.
And thank you for your indulgence, if that's what it was. Two bits of it, number three, to me, actually demands recommendation, recommending a target date, which says within it that we will be doing it. I mean, recommending a date to do it on is already making the decision. It's not recommending whether we might do it, or whether it's a good plan, or anything else like that. It's recommending when, not if. And this seems to me to be...
I'm happy to change that, I'm happy to put in the word possible.
Yeah.
All drugs are changing now, isn't it?
Because to me, there's a confusion, and I'm not sure, I think that partially clarifies it, but there's a confusion. It seems to me some of the people in the room are comforted by the idea that we're not making a decision now, we're just looking at it, and other people are comforted by the idea that we've made the decision, unless things really go wrong and we're sort of carrying it out. And we need to know whether which of these things...
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the mover and from the chief, is that that can be drafted to take account of your very good point, that it effectively is ambiguous. And so that can be dealt with. So essentially, what the redrafting has to do is make three three read, so that it is not assumed that a decision is made.
Which was not the intention.
Not the intention, okay. So councillor Wilson, you've got a point to make.
I had thought that councillor Calvert had two issues, but that's... Well, that was the, the second issue was that we, two different, two different hot ears are going on here, and we've got to clarify. My issue here is that we, that there is a potential medium ground, which is joint governance, and this looks at one solution, I'm just wondering whether it needs to broaden out, or even in the interim, look at joint governance, toward decisions made, and I'm not sure that, I'm sure that that's the intent, that those sort of things can be worked through, through the forum. But it's just whether it needs to be broadened out to offer that as an option. It's not necessarily what I think is the end result, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what the end result is going to look like until I see the data.
Right, I'm going to, I'm going to, we've just, I'll add the extra comments to address the particular issue that had been raised by councillor Bezette, but we've resolved it, so I'm going to move on.
Well, the comment was that I thought that would resolve his other issue, which was the date of its joint governance. So that's why I was raising it, whether that was...
But joint, yeah, well, the joint governance will either come out of the recommendations or not. So we will revert to process now, and the next speaker is councillor Pegg.
Thank you, worship. I think I'll get a question, and...
Just, sorry, can I... councillor Bezette, had you not finished or...
No, I hadn't, and look, I appreciate your time to read some decision here by consensus, and I really do appreciate that. I'm not so hung up on the, on the date either, the possible date of transfer, 2016, 2017, except that that can be moved out at any time, or indeed shortened. What I am concerned, and I'm asking a question of the CEO, is that this forum is going to be put together within the next two or three weeks. I mean, we're talking about, when's the next, the February council meeting? And how is that going to be put together? And is council going to vote on that? How is that going to come about? Because I want to know who the members are, and I want to be able to be satisfied that we've approached the appropriate people.
So we'd have to go to the Regional Council and ask them if they're interested. Obviously, we can compel and wouldn't want to, to form a joint subcommittee or some form. We will do that probably this afternoon, if you pass this. They'll have the discussions at their end, we'll draft a report to come back to you, and then the mayor will go through a process of seeking expressions of interest, or however you'd like to structure that, as you draft that report, for who would be the membership from this end, and the IRC will do similarly at their end. So the first thing will be to get next, to make an approach about their willingness, and then come back to you about the membership and the rough terms of reference underlying with what's written there under Article Three.
So what I just suggested to the chief, as an aside, is that I would be asking council laws for expressions of interest. I wouldn't be thinking that I or anyone would appoint as such.
So that means we will report, that, yourself, your worship, or the CEO, will report back at the next council meeting on the makeup of that group?
For your vote, so that will come back to you for a vote.
I'm really unhappy about that, because, as I say, the, you know, getting the right
people is very important, and it's a very tight timeframe that we're working to. I'll just move an amendment that we extend that time out. What is a reasonable time, you said earlier on, Sue, that you want to get this underway as soon as possible? I don't see any reason why we can't extend it by another month, anyway.
Why don't we say and report back as soon as possible? And that way, if it takes longer to negotiate it with the IRC, we've got the time to do that properly. If it takes longer to get decisions from you about who might be wanting to put their name forward, we've got the time to do that. And we just say, and if we can do it by the 23rd, then we can. I mean, it's us that are saying, to meet that February date, things have to move pretty quickly. We'll get a quick sense of how quickly this is going to come together.
So from the point of view of the resolution, it's, you're comfortable, the movers and seniors are comfortable, so it's the 22nd of February date that is now as soon as possible? councillor Pegg, sorry, I...
Thank you. I think what we're signalling with this motion, and I'm coming around to support it, is that we are keen but cautious. And with all the possibles and provisional and certain... And with all the possibles and provisionals inserted in it, I think that's going to be the way the regional council will see this. Hopefully, they will and that they will see too that we strategically and even organisationally, we are the appropriate place to govern this public transport for the city. The financial side, though, I'm not so certain about. And I earlier thought that 1 July 2017 would be better. I think from what staff have indicated that also saying that maybe we won't by 1 July 2016 have enough, have a handle on the financials. But at least we may... We ought to make a start on it and hopefully this process will do that and give us an idea because this will impact on our rates. Now, rates will go up, the regional councils ones will come down. Hopefully, the ratepayers will see that there's a neutral cost to them. But I can tell you, you know, if you live on the peninsula, your rates from the regional council may be one-third is the transport targeted rate. And so it is quite considerable when you live in certain parts of the city. And you'll see that go down and be happy and you'll see it come on to the city's rates bill and perhaps wonder what's happening. Nonetheless, I think 1 July 2016 is ambitious and it's an eye-watering day. I think it's probably on reflection, having been in the regional council and been involved in governance of this for nine years, I can say that maybe it would be better that we stick with the 16 rather than the 17 because 17 would suggest that we are far too wishy-washy and about and uncertain about our, in principle, support for the transfer. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Councillor Wadley.
I also will be supporting this. One of the items that I pick up out of this report that concerns me a little bit is when I look at the table one on 18124, where it says February 2015, the Otago Regional Council law to agree will show how much is going to be invested in the public transport system. I just hope the ORC do not see what we're proposing and say, oh, we'll delay some of that spending, we'll delay some of that investment. The ORC, in my view, needs to really push forward with the technology advances in public transport. And because that shows it does increase patronage and it does increase, you know, services and acceptance and happiness with the service. The other part is, you know, this is a Dunedin City Bus Service and we do need to have a greater say in how our ratepayers receive their service. So I totally support an active joint governance and definitely sticking with the 2016 date.
Thank you. Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't imagine, especially after this debate and the previous ones we've had, that this council is going to make any decision lightly about a transfer of this kind, should that be recommended. But I think it would be good to try to accelerate the process and to do that jointly with the regional council. I think it's fair to say that there has been some significant improvement in recent times in terms of both routing of vehicles and also, and in fact, our development of the second generation plan acknowledges that concentration and different focus. And also in terms of the quality of the fleet or lack of quality of the fleet because as most people will be only too aware, for whatever reason, the vehicles that have been running to Dunedin streets for some time don't sit very comfortably in comparison with what you see in other parts of this country. And I think our people have been, for whatever reason, poorly served by some of those contracts and aged and inappropriate vehicles. The key thing for me, and one of the key elements for me in this discussion, is the argument about proper urban planning and integration of a key part of our transport system into good urban design. And if we can achieve that as part of a possible transfer or some sort of arrangement that may come out of what's proposed, then that would only be to the advantage of the people who live in and will come to live in one of the world's great small cities. And without a decent public transport system, we won't achieve that goal. And without it being proper, such a system being properly integrated into what happens throughout the city and in particular in the city centre, we won't achieve that goal either. So I think this is a sensible way forward, in principle, again, and provisional. There is no commitment here. And as I say, I can't imagine that this decision is going to be supported by even a majority of the council if there's lacking information that we don't have as these decision points move forward.
Councillor Nune.
The only comment that I would make is that it's been really satisfying hearing the discussion that we haven't made a final decision. And I think everyone has accepted that. And I think, to be fair, if you go back and look at the previous recommendation that we accepted, we did have the words that no final decision had been made with regards to the transfer. And I think as elected members, I think that we are prepared to take the cautious approach. I wasn't totally satisfied with 1 July 2016. I would much prefer 2017, but accepting that it is a provisional target and like everything in local government, you never often hit targets unless there's a monetary fine at the end of it. So I think we have the ability to control that. But other than that, I've been happy with the way that the mover and the second have been willing to entertain some massaging of the recommendations. So I'm satisfied with the way they are now and all support them.
Thank you. I don't think there's anyone who hasn't spoken, so I'll just convey my thoughts before I hand back to the mover. I need to declare that I'm in the camp of favouring transfer of responsibility for public transport from the ORC to the DCC, albeit cautiously and prudently. And I do that, I take that position for a number of the reasons that have been articulated around the table. Councillor Hawkins mentioned the democratic and councillor Staines as well. The perhaps even absurdity of something as important as our public transport system being controlled by people who have responsibility to other areas of our region and not to And I think, though, the main reason is the one articulated by councillor Benson-Pope, which is, and it was identified by the study that was done for us and for the ORC by consultants, where they identified that in terms of aligning and integrating our public transport with our central city development, our spatial plan, our economic development strategy, et cetera, the responsibility for public transport should be with the DCC. And I use the word responsibility deliberately. It is our responsibility to take care of aligning the important factors that impact on the future of our city. It's our responsibility as a Dunedin City Council to do that. The ORC has, we all acknowledge, improved delivery in the last little while. What they can't do is improve that alignment with all of the other things that we have to take responsibility for. With the best will in the world, they can't do that. And we need to. I would just briefly like to address the issue of how fuel costs, as councillor Wadley mentioned, might impact in the future. And I acknowledge that they may in the medium term. But I also note that the future demand that was identified was not driven by economy or cost. It was driven by the aging cohort or partly the aging cohort in the city. So regardless of what the cost of fuel is, there will be an increasing need for public transport on the part of all the people in the area. So to me, the risks here, and this is largely about risks, are not financial. The risks are a much delayed or missed opportunity to integrate public transport with our central city planning, our spatial development, et cetera. So I believe we should work through this process with the ORC to minimise the most significant risks, but most importantly, to maximise the opportunities and our responsibilities. So I should be supporting it. Councillor McTavish, would you like to exercise your own reply?
I need to thank colleagues for the collaborative approach to ensuring that this resolution is as robust as it can be. And yeah, I think that it's from the comments that have been made around the table, I think there is a lot of goodwill around ensuring that we do a really good job of this. And that's really important because I think, again, I come back to the open comment that I made, that we need to focus on minimising risk to our ratepayers, to the people who are paying for this service. And I think there are risks that sit in both camps, but the strategic risks are the big ones, they're the ones that we need to be focusing on, particularly in light of our new strategic framework. And the opportunity is there for us to make a big dent in those strategic risks. So yeah, I endorse the resolution. But I thank everybody for helping me to get to where it is.
Thank you. I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, no recording, please. Councillor Wadley. Thank you. That's carried. On behalf of the Manchester Times, great for morning tea, can I just observe that and endorse the remarks of councillor McTavish? That was a really satisfying example of collaborative decision-making from all sides in the debate. So I appreciate it on the part of all of my colleagues. Thank you. We're now back to 4:24.